Recording in progress.
Good evening and welcome to the 12th meeting for a fiscal year 2024 for the Milton Planning Board. At this time, I'd like to now call the meeting to order. We will first begin with our administrative items. Starting, excuse me, before we begin, I actually would like to introduce the members of the Planning Board and our staff. If we could start going around the room, Jim?
Jim Davis, member.
Cheryl Taggaias, Secretary.
Sean Fahey, member.
Maggie Yostfield, member.
And Meredith Hall serving as Chair. To introduce our staff, Tim?
Tim Zarwinski, Director of Planning and Community Development.
Julia?
Julia, that's my card.
Josh Eckert-Lee, the Assistant Director is here. He's kind of serving as
Checking people in.
The MC for the public hearing, so he'll be up and about.
He is with us, yes, checking people in to sign.
Recording in progress.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you all who are joining us this evening and taking your time out on a weeknight. And those of you who are on Zoom, we welcome you. So we can now begin with our administrative items, approval of minutes. We have one set of minutes that have been edited from November 5th? October 5th, excuse me, October 5th. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes from October 5th?
I have, I'm good with them.
Yeah, the only, I didn't get a chance to confirm on page two the last sentence above the fiscal impact analysis. It said that I asked Mr. Taggaias her language be put forward. I haven't reviewed if I actually said that.
I don't know that I did not go back and watch the tape, so.
Yeah, so that's the only, I agree with the second part of that sentence, but not.
You could strike the second.
We could strike that sentence, is that okay, Julia? So can I have a motion to approve the minutes of October 5th with the amended?
Make a motion to approve the minutes of October 5th with Maggie's amendments.
Second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Next, discussion of next meeting dates. We have, for those of you who are here, thank you for coming. But there will also be a public forum, which Tim will be conducting for those who are still learning about the MBTA Communities zoning process. And that will be held at the library in the Keys Room at 7:00 PM on November 1st. So that, if anyone could not make it tonight, they'll also be able to, and if they didn't get a chance to speak tonight, they'll also be able to speak at that public forum. So I encourage all to attend on November 1st. Then we next have our regular scheduled meeting for November 9th, Planning Board. And then following that, we have a November 16th meeting, not meeting on the 23rd, as it is Thanksgiving. So those are our two meetings for November. Excuse me, the next item on the agenda is Director of Planning. Any update from Tim?
I don't have a ton, but we noticed this hearing for 7:10. So I'm gonna stall a little bit.
That's great, and I'll have a few words just to say about the process, so.
But in addition to the public forum we have on the first on MBTA Communities, we will also be having a public forum on our East Milton Mixed Use Zoning Process. That'll be the first public meeting that we'll have on that. That'll be November 6th, I believe, at 7 o'clock at the Milton Arts Center. So hopefully, we will see our friends out in East Milton to kick off that process. We're very excited, it's been a long time coming, and we're excited to get out there and talk to folks. So looking forward to seeing everybody.
That's great, and that's, you said the Milton Arts Center?
Yes.
That's great, make sure people know where it is, great, terrific. And we do have just a brief time for Citizen Speak. The Citizen Speak tonight is for something that is not currently on our agenda. So if somebody has something that they would like to speak on, which is not related to the MBTA Communities zoning, we would welcome anyone who would like to speak either in person or on Zoom. Are we seeing any, no one in the audience here?
Not seeing any hands.
Great, okay. So just to, before we open our public hearing, I just wanted to talk about process this evening. The plan is, once we open the public hearing, Tim will make a presentation for everyone, just to sort of give an overview for those who are still learning, or for those who might gather some more information. Tim will begin with that introduction. And then we will open with an opportunity for residents to speak, make statements, ask questions. We are limiting that unfortunately, because we do have a lot of people who would like to speak, and we want as many people to be able to speak this evening, two to three minutes. Julie will be keeping the time, but it will be limited to three minutes this evening, as many people will want to share. And if you can keep it to two minutes, keep it brief, that would be wonderful. We also, if you don't get a chance to speak, we will also be, if somebody wants to send an email or could not speak tonight, please let them know. We would welcome any emails to be sent to the Board. You can send them to Tim, and Tim can share them with the Board. So that, we just wanted to be clear. And then, of course, you know, this is such an important issue, that we just want everyone to always be respectful, whether you're addressing, you know, the Board members or questions of the staff, you know, we really, or the Select Board members who are here, we just ask that everyone is respectful to one another this evening. So, and I know you will, so without doubt.
So I believe So Mirth, just to sort of go a little bit more in depth on how we're gonna run the public comment portion. So we've got folks on the Zoom. If you've been participating in a Zoom meeting before, you know that when public comment comes up, hit the raise hand button, you will be entered into a queue, and we'll take that queue in order. The way that we'll be addressing folks that are here in person is, we've got a sign-in sheet, there's a sign-in sheet. Can you actually keep that door open? Okay. People in the hall should probably keep it down. Since we've got folks in overflow rooms, we've got a sign-in sheet, there's a sign-in sheet on the table outside the room. If you are here and you would like to talk, go sign in on that sheet. And I'm talking to folks in the room, and I'm talking to folks that are watching on TV, up in the Cronin and down in the Baker Room. We're gonna alternate between in-person testimony and Zoom testimony. What I will try to do is rattle off the next three or four names on my sign-in sheet, so that if you are in an overflow room, you'll have ample opportunity to get down to the blute to give your testimony. So again, if you're here and you want to talk, sign in on the sign-in sheet outside the blute room. And if you're on Zoom, when the time for public testimony comes, just raise your hand. You'll be automatically entered into the queue, as long as you don't un-raise it. We'll get through that list as much as possible. Folks that are in the overflow rooms, like I said, Josh is here, and he's keeping an eye on things. If there's any problem with the tech, if you can't hear, or the screen goes dead or something, either grab Josh or come down here to the blute, and we'll get you all fixed up. So I think that's it.
For the people who might be in those overflow rooms who signed up, Tim, are you going to call them so that they will come into the room then?
So if you're in an overflow room, please come down here and sign in on a sign-in sheet. We're gonna be grabbing those sign-in sheets, and I'm gonna say, you know, Joe Blow, Jane Blow, and so-and-so are up next. Please make your way down to the blute room so you can, you know, give your testimony. So, you know, we won't be in a situation where folks are kind of scrambling down here. But it's really important to get your name on the sign-in sheet.
And just lastly, we will be allowing the residents to move through all of their comments and questions before the Board will be addressing. So if you don't have your question answered immediately, we will be making time to do that at the latter part of the evening. But we'd like to move through all of the residents' time for questions and comments first. And then, so the Board will refrain from making comments in between. So it's just to make sure we can keep on schedule, so. Okay, great, so with that, I would like to open the public hearing for the Select Board's MBTA Communities article. And to begin, Tim, if you wanna kick us off.
All right, there we go. Okay, so thanks, everybody. Again, my name is Tim Zarwinski, I'm the Director of Planning and Community Development. And I've been the staff point person on our MBTA Communities compliance efforts. So just a quick reminder, I do this at the start of every public meeting. If you go to townofmilton.org/miltonmbta, you will find this page. It's got all of the resources we have from the state on the MBTA Communities law, every presentation we've ever given, recordings of every forum we've ever had, everything to do with Milton's efforts here, you can find on this website. So what is the MBTA Communities law? In previous slides that I've done, presentations, I've kind of paraphrased, but I do want to kind of read off the law word for word. Whoops. This was the law that was passed as part of a larger economic development bill in January of 2021. And it's an amendment of Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40A, which is the Zoning Act. So if you ever hear us refer to Section 3A or 3A, that's what we mean when we say MBTA Communities law. So, "An MBTA community shall have a zoning ordinance or bylaw that provides for at least one district of reasonable size in which multifamily housing is permitted as of right, provided however that such multifamily housing shall be without age restrictions and shall be suitable for families with children. For the purposes of this section, a district of reasonable size shall, one, have a minimum gross density of 15 units per acre, subject to any further limitations imposed by Section 40 of Chapter 131 and Title 5 of the State Environmental Code, established pursuant to Section 13 of Chapter 21A; and, two, be located not more than 0.5 miles from a commuter rail station, subway station, ferry terminal, or bus station, if applicable. Further, an MBTA community that fails to comply with this section shall not be eligible for funds from, one, the Housing Choice Initiative, as described by the Governor in a message to the General Court dated December 11th, 2017; two, the Local Capital Projects Fund, established in Section 2EEE of Chapter 29; or, three, the Mass Works Infrastructure Program, established in Section 63 of Chapter 23A; and finally, C, the Department, in consultation with the Massachusetts Bay Transportation Authority and the Massachusetts Department of Transportation, shall promulgate guidelines to determine if an MBTA community is in compliance with this section." That's it, that's the law. So it's a mandate for towns to create zoning. And it's not a mandate for towns to create new housing. And I want to make sure that we're very clear about that from the outset, that our job is to create zoning. And if we create compliant zoning and get the thumbs up from the state, and not a single housing unit is built, we will still be considered to be in compliance. The theory behind the law is to loosen restrictive zoning laws and enable property owners to meet the intense demand that we see for housing in greater Boston. So that final bullet right there is just what I just said. We're passing zoning, we're not mandated to actually create any housing. Where are we? So the last portion of the law that I just read off authorizes the State Housing Agency, at the time of passage was DHCD. Today, it's the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, to create guidelines to help towns comply with the law. And the reason why these guidelines are necessary, and I'll just, you know, again, scroll back to the text of the law, it's, it might be 20 lines worth of law. And so there's a lot of room for interpretation, a lot of room for what does reasonable size mean? You know, what does suitable for families with children mean? All sorts of things that, you know, rather than have towns try to figure this out on their own, the State Housing Agency was authorized to create guidelines to help towns comply with the law. So one of the things that the guidelines do is they categorize MBTA communities by their level of transit service. So there are three tranches of service, rapid transit, commuter rail, and adjacent communities. So adjacent communities are communities that don't have a station, but have developable land in a five and a half mile radius of a station in another town. Commuter rail towns have a commuter rail station, rapid transit towns have a rapid transit station. So among the other requirements in the guidelines, there are deadlines set for these different types of communities. And the rapid transit communities have the earliest deadline, which is December 31st of 2023, to adopt compliant zoning. This is why we're having a special town meeting at the beginning of December. So both the statute and the guidelines lay out certain thresholds that our zoning district has to meet in order to be deemed compliant. One of the things that's in the law is 15 units per acre, that's non-negotiable. The guidelines have further thresholds that the state has used to determine, this is what we mean by reasonable size. And so among other thresholds that our zoning has to pass is 15 units per acre overall density. The geography has to be at least 50 acres in area. It has to have what they call a unit capacity of a certain amount. And that means it's got to be capable of accommodating new units equivalent to 25% of the town's existing year-round housing units. So in Milton's case, excuse me, 25% of our year-round housing total is 2,461 units. There's a little bit of a repeat in my bullet here, that's what I just said. And then at least 50% of the area of the sub-district, and at least 50% of the unit capacity of the zoning district, have to be located within a half a mile of transit. So the guidelines are long and complicated, but they give us a decent amount of flexibility for how to craft these zoning districts in ways that we feel will kind of work for Milton. In terms of location, we're allowed to, owing to the fact that the Mattapan Trolley, if you draw a half-mile radius around each of those stations, and you'll see maps later on showing that, that within that half-mile radius is found the developable area within transit. And because the Mattapan Trolley is so close to the river, and hence the border with the city of Boston, we have a significant fraction of our developable area is actually not developable, because it's not in Milton. And so the guidelines allow us then to locate a portion of our district outside of the transit area. Again, owing to the fact that we have less of a percentage of developable area as another town that might have transit stations right in the middle of their, right in the middle of their borders. So we're allowed to locate, you know, up to 50% outside of the transit area. So that's a flexibility that we've been given by the state guidelines. We're allowed to create different sub-districts. So the zoning district does not have to be one globby geography with one set of dimensional parameters. We can create different sub-districts that are in different parts of town, different geographies, have different heights, densities, setbacks, et cetera, with a few restrictions. So at least half of the district needs to be contiguous. So we can create smaller sub-districts for about half of what our total zoning district is gonna be. And each sub-district needs to be a minimum of five acres. So you can't create, you know, 51-acre zoning districts kind of all over town. They've gotta be, you know, little chunks of at least five acres. So one of the questions that we got early on is, you know, do we have any districts that are already compliant with this law? There are cities and towns that do, that do allow multifamily housing by right that meets the restrictions in the statute and the guidelines. City of Cambridge, for instance, you know, as you can imagine, has significant portions of their city are zoned for multifamily. They're doing minimal tweaks to their zoning code to achieve compliance. Milton does not have any compliant districts. The overwhelming majority of land is zoned for one housing unit on one parcel with different minimum lot sizes. Where we have allowed multifamily and townhouse development, it's been by special permit, which is distinct from as-of-right, these are zoning kind of permitting, you know, methods. As-of-right means if you meet all of the benchmarks that are laid out in the zoning, you go to the building department and you get your building permit. In a special permit context, there is a submission process and a whole sort of list of conditions that you have to go to the Planning Board, and the Planning Board has discretion whether or not to give the special permit. So there's a lot more strict kind of oversight on a project-by-project basis in a special permit context. That's how we've tended to do multifamily development when we have done it in Milton. And then a lot of our multifamily development is actually age-restricted. So if you think of Fuller Village, if you think of Winter Valley, if you think of Unquity House, these are legit multifamily projects, but they're age-restricted. And you can't mandate age restriction under the MBTA Communities Act. So the zoning that we're creating is effectively entirely new zoning. There's no tweaks to be done for our existing zoning. We've got wide latitude in terms of setting dimensional requirements. Dimensional requirements are kind of, you know, one of the bread and butter things behind zoning, height setbacks, open space, parking requirements. We get to set those, and they don't have to be uniform across the districts. We can create different sub-districts that have different dimensional parameters, as long as the average of all of the sub-districts meet the law's minimum requirements for density, reasonable size, and as-of-right permitting. So the example that I use is, if you have two sub-districts, and they each comprise half of the total district, one of them can have a density of five units per acre, which is far below the 15 units per acre outline in the law, as long as the other sub-district has a density of 25 units per acre. So all other things being equal, you have two different densities, but they all average out to 15 units per acre. Ours does not work out that simply, but it does work out to 15 units per acre. So there are a lot of restrictions, it is a mandate to create zoning. We don't have a choice in the matter, but we do have a decent amount of flexibility to shape these things in a way, you know, that we believe works for us. So the effects of non-compliance, and this is something that's laid out in the statute and has been further articulated in the guidelines. So if at any point HLC, the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, determines that an MBTA community is not compliant with Section 3A, that MBTA community will not be eligible for funds from, and these are the grant funds that are laid out in the statute, Housing Choice Initiative, which is a grant program that is meant to incentivize housing production. We're actually not a Housing Choice community. You have to meet certain production benchmarks to be in that program. The Local Capital Projects Fund is a fund that is actually capitalized by casino revenue. And that is one where it's actually not a discretionary grant program. That's a program where those funds are appropriated by the legislature. And they have been traditionally appropriated to provide subsidy to local housing authorities. So when this law first came out, it was actually a pretty huge deal that the Local Capital Projects Fund was up for grabs, because it's not a huge portion of local housing authority budgets, but it is, it is a part of it. And so, you know, anywhere between $30,000 and $35,000 a year the Milton Housing Authority has gotten in state subsidies from the Local Capital Projects Fund. So that was at risk. The fiscal '25 budget that the legislature recently passed actually kind of creates a carve-out that basically says you'll get your Local Capital Projects money. Because there was a bit of an uproar, you know, when this first came out, that, you know, putting local housing authorities at risk. So a little bit of the teeth has been taken out of the Local Capital Projects Fund portion of this. And then finally, Mass Works. Mass Works is the biggest one. It's a between $70 million and $100 million a year infrastructure grant program that funds significant infrastructure projects in cities and towns throughout the Commonwealth. Milton has been the beneficiary of about $1 million in Mass Works funds since 2011, although not in the recent past. So those are the three grant programs that are laid out in the statute that, you know, we would be ineligible for if we were non-compliant. In the meantime, HLC has identified 13 other discretionary grant programs that they administer, for which they've said, "We're gonna take MBTA Communities compliance into account with these grant programs." A lot of them don't necessarily apply to Milton, but the Municipal Vulnerability Planning Program grant is one of those grant programs. We have received tens of thousands of dollars out of that program. And it's actually kind of the number-one source of climate resiliency, infrastructure kind of funding for cities and towns. And so that's one that might bite a little bit. There's other ones, the Land Program, which is a program through the Division of Conservation that basically is a grant program for acquisition of open space. We would be eligible for those funds once our open space and recreation plan is approved. So that's one that's in there, in that suite of 13 discretionary grant programs that HLC has identified. And then there are sort of the unknown consequences of non-compliance. But both Governor Healey and Attorney General Campbell have indicated that housing is a priority for their offices. This is a statement that Governor Healey made a few months ago. Opting out is not an option, we've got to do this across the state. The administration is really going to lean in here with regards to MBTA communities. There are also outside groups that have indicated that, you know, they'll go after towns on civil rights and fair housing grounds. So the Town of Holden has been a target, you know, due to their statements about non-compliance. And then the Attorney General offered an advisory opinion earlier this year, you know, that effectively said, I usually read this, I won't read the entire thing, because I've done it before. I feel like a lot of people have seen this presentation. But basically, that if towns don't comply, that they're gonna be liable to civil enforcement action from the Attorney General's office on state and federal fair housing grounds. So this is something that the Attorney General has been super clear about. The first deadline for compliance has not yet passed yet, so there hasn't been an opportunity. Everyone that needs to comply still has an opportunity to comply before December 31st. We'll see what happens when the calendar turns, you know, if there are any non-compliant communities. We've asked for Town Council's opinion about compliance and sort of the validity of the guidelines. That's kind of enforceable by law. Town Council tends to agree with the Attorney General. So this is just a bit from the memo that Town Council sent to us. That's also posted on the Resources page on the MBTA Communities website, on the Planning Department page. So what does compliance look like? As I said earlier, the zoning district that we create has to satisfy several variables, including being at least 50 acres in size, have a zoned capacity of at least 2,461 units. We'll talk about zone capacity in a minute. And an overall density of 15 units per acre. We've been working with various technical assistance providers. You'll hear UTIL is the name of the firm that we've been working with. And we've been using a software tool that the state has created called a compliance model. If you can imagine, there are 177 MBTA communities. The state needs to create a kind of objective, consistent set of benchmarks that they can judge communities by. And this compliance model tool is the tool that they're gonna be using. It's basically, it's a set of Excel spreadsheets. It's got all of the information and requirements of the guidelines kind of built into the backend. You plug in your geography via geographic information system parcel data. You plug in your dimensional parameters, and it basically spits out, you know, have you met the compliance kind of thresholds in terms of unit capacity, size, overall density? So you'll see some of the outputs that come out of that compliance model in a minute. So this is what our zoning district looks like on a townwide basis. And I just want to mention, we're gonna be talking about the zoning district as a whole. That's the sort of the sum of these sub-districts that you see on this map. This is the townwide map, just to kind of give you some context. All of those circles are kind of transit stations with a half-mile radius drawn around them. We are gonna zoom in on the portion of town that kind of has our zoning districts. And so I'll just get you situated from left to right. The pink district over here, kind of running down Blue Hills Parkway, is what we're calling the Blue Hills Parkway Corridor Subdistrict. The purple one is the Mattapan Station Subdistrict. This encompasses the Unquity House site on Curtis Road and several other parcels around it to kind of get to that five-acre minimum sub-district size. The bluish-greenish one in the middle is what we're calling the Elliot Street Corridor Subdistrict. This is, you know, effectively Elliot Street and some of the side streets. We've tried to kind of hug the transit line as much as possible in that one. The next few, the green and yellow ones, and there are hatch marks that I'll discuss in a minute, is our Milton Station and Central Station Subdistrict. We've carved this up into three smaller sub-districts, east, west, and bridge, bridge being the bridge between east and west. The ones that are hatched are what we're The ones that are hatched are what we're designating as our mandatory mixed-use districts. Just kind of put a pin in that term because we'll have a slide about it a little bit later. But this basically encompasses the Central Ave Business District, the two Milton Hill House parcels on Elliott Street, and then the northern portion of the Central Ave Business District. In the upper right, in orange, you have our Granite Avenue District, and there are two sub-sub-districts, North and South. Those comprise two Granite Avenue. And then the two parcels south of that, on the other side of the interchange, are the State DPW Yard and Park and Ride, and then the American Legion Site. And then finally, East Milton Square, which more or less kind of covers the boundaries of the Business District with a few parcels in and a few parcels out. But if you think of the East Milton Business Districts, you're halfway there. So we're proposing six sub-districts, and some of those sub-districts have kind of further miniature sub-districts to comprise what's our overall district. Each of those sub-districts has been tailored to match as much as possible the existing built environment via restrictions on height, density, setbacks, open space requirements, and the other dimensional parameters that we have at our disposal as zoning tools. So just to give you a little bit of a closer look at what these look like, like I said, the East Milton Square District is more or less the Business District, although I will mention that the Fruit Center is actually not in the Business District. That's in a residential district, but we're folding it in here. And then the Rockland Trust Building, another example of a commercial building outside of the actual commercial district. We took out the Post Office and the Milton Arts Center. Those are two publicly owned buildings. One of the aspects of the guidelines is that you don't get credit for zoning public parcels unless they've been recently kind of up for disposition or identified as strategic housing sites in a housing production plan. So those are two parcels that are kind of character-defining buildings in our district and weren't really doing anything for us from a unit capacity perspective. So that's why you see a little bit of a hole in the left side of that district. This is the Granite Avenue North District, two Granite Avs. Everyone's familiar with the office building up there. The South Subdistrict is, the top pointy part, is the Salt Shed and DPW Yard, the sort of the middle portion being the Park and Ride Lot. And then that southern portion is the American Legion Hall across the street from the golf course. The Milton Station East Sub-Subdistrict comprises 88 Wharf, two Adams Street, one Elliott Street, and then kind of uses the train track parcel as kind of a connection to get to the rest of the district. The Milton Station Bridge Subdistrict is, like I said, the two Milton Hill House parcels. So 50 Elliott Street is the new Milton Hill House. 36 Elliott Street is the old Milton Hill House. And then, I went the wrong way. And then our Milton Station West District actually is comprising the Central Ave Business District. So the Steel and Rye Building, the Hendrys Building, these two commercial buildings, 36 Central, the building where Stevie's and Mackey's is. The Mattapan Station Subdistrict, again, comprises the predominant parcel, and really the main redevelopment parcel that we're looking at here, is the Unquity House parcel. We folded in these other single-family house parcels because the Unquity House parcel is four-point-something acres, and we needed to get to five acres to be its own sub-district. We have set our dimensional parameters here to minimize any kind of funky stuff happening on these single-family parcels. So there's no kind of, the zoning here is set for a similar building to the Unquity House building. And we just want to make sure that that kind of development is not happening on these single-family parcels. And then finally, the Blue Hills Parkway Corridor is basically the parcels that are fronting on Blue Hills Parkway down basically to the Tucker School. And then finally, the Elliott Street Corridor, which is probably our largest sub-district. These are all the parcels that are associated with that. If you follow this process, you'll know that kind of the size and shape of this sub-district has kind of ebbed and flowed over the course of our kind of iteration process. But this is where we've landed on this. And this is one that we'll talk in a little bit more depth because it contains the most number of parcels that are potentially affected by zoning. And is also probably already the densest area that we have in town that we're rezoning. So this is kind of slide number one of where the action really is. And this is our Compliance Model summary. So there's a lot of other kind of sheets in this Compliance Model, but this is the one that it spits out that tells you, here are the primary inputs that we're taking into account, and here are the outputs in terms of unit capacity, size, and density. And so I'll try to, I'll take these one by one just so that everyone is kind of on the same page, and kind of go into what the sort of primary dimensional parameters that are affecting density are, and then kind of what the outputs are in terms of how many units that is and whatever. So in the Granite Avenue North District, and you see the six in parentheses, so we've set a height limit of six stories in that Granite Avenue North Subdistrict, set a density of 45 units per acre and a floor area ratio of 1.1. Floor area ratio is, it's a math problem. It's the amount of floor area in a building divided by the area of the parcel that the building is on. So if you propose a building and you do that division problem and it comes out to more than 1.1, you can't do it. So that's, it's just another kind of dimensional parameter that puts controls on the bulk of a building. We've actually got a, excuse me, I'll go into this in the future slide, but there's a typo on this where it says minimum parking spaces per unit. We've actually done a few edits to our parking ratios. We're actually doing parking maximums as opposed to parking minimums. And I'll explain that in a little bit. But we've set a parking maximum of 1.5 spaces per unit in both of the Granite Avenue sub-districts. Again, the height, six in the North District, 4.5 in the South District. And then the maximum percentage of building and parking coverage is 60%. So what that winds up yielding from a unit capacity perspective, and what the model is doing is basically saying, okay, you've got a parcel this size, and you're saying you can build a building that's this size. What the Compliance Model assumes is there are going to be units that are an average of 1,000 square feet. So that's a big assumption that the model is already making. In real life, maybe there'll be units that are 1,000 square feet. Maybe some will be bigger, maybe some will be smaller. But that's one assumption that the model makes. And it basically says, given these dimensional parameters, this is how many units could conceivably fit on this site. And so that's what unit capacity is calculating. And we'll go into the limitations of that in a minute. But the Granite Avenue sub-districts are, in the north, yielding 171 units, in the south, yielding 530 units. The Mattapan Station Subdistrict, this is another one. We've pegged that at 45 units per acre. We've got to make a correction here. But the same FAR of 1.1, six stories, one space per unit max. One thing that, Granite Ave is a little bit of an outlier because there's no multifamily buildings there. There is an office building. The rest of our sub-districts already have housing, whether it's multifamily or single-family housing. And what you'll see in the next slide where we talk about the specific dimensional parameters is we've done our best to match the existing dimensional parameters that are either in the current zoning or are reflective of the multifamily housing that's already there. So Unquity House is already six stories. So we are zoning for just another six-story building on that site. It can be a little bit larger because that site has a little bit of an anachronistic site plan. There is space for more housing on that site, but that yields 228 units. The Milton Station sub-districts are all pegged at 40 units per acre. This is, again, kind of reflective of some of the existing multifamily housing that's already there. The Hendrys Building at 131 Elliott Street is 38 units on an almost exactly one-acre parcel. So 40 units per acre is, think of the Hendrys Building. 88 Wharf is 73 units on a parcel that's slightly larger than two acres. So again, kind of in that 35 to 37 units per acre range. So those are the size of buildings that you get when you say 40 units per acre in a six-story building in the east, which matches 88 Wharf, and in a four-and-a-half-story building in the Bridge and West Districts, which match 50 Elliott Street and 131 Elliott Street. Everyone gets a 60% max building and parking coverage, except for the Blue Hills Parkway One thing that I want to say about the East Milton Square zoning, and you'll start to see, this has a lower density, this has a lower height limit at two-and-a-half stories. One of the things that we're trying to do with the East Milton Square District, as I mentioned earlier on, that we are initiating a mixed-use zoning process in East Milton. This has been a long time coming. We've been planning in East Milton for many years. This is something that kind of predates MBTA communities becoming a thing. But we want to make sure that if we plan on doing multifamily housing somewhere, let's get credit for it when the state is mandating us to do it. So we have created a sub-district in East Milton Square that we think offers a credible path to redevelopment if property owners want to take advantage of it. But our thinking is that we will create special permit zoning during this East Milton mixed-use zoning process that is going to be a more attractive option to the development community. And that will be not by right zoning, but rather special permit zoning, which we can then have different requirements for open space and street escape improvements and additional affordability, all of the things that we like to do to have kind of control over development via special permit, we'll be able to do. The Elliott Street Corridor is, again, these two last ones are different from the other ones because the parcels are much smaller and the context is overwhelmingly single-family. And so in the Elliott Street Corridor, there's no, the other sub-districts don't have a maximum units per lot. The units that you're allowed to produce are kind of governed by all of the other dimensional requirements. In the Elliott Street Corridor District, we are setting a strict cap of you only get to build three units on any given lot. Your minimum lot size is 7,500 square feet. Your max building height is two-and-a-half stories. So this, again, two-and-a-half stories is in the zoning today. 7,500 square feet is the minimum lot size today in the majority of the Elliott Street Corridor District. So what we're trying to do all over, and with varying degrees of success, is trying to set up these parcels for as minimal amount of tear downs as possible. We want to give property owners the tools, if they're going to avail themselves of the zoning, to be able to use the existing footprint of their building, to be able to use the existing house that they have, and add those units via an addition in the back, dormer out the roof, do something that will kind of preserve the physical character of the neighborhood. Because it's one of the fundamental things that we've been operating under. Because it's worn itself out in every planning initiative we've done, from the master plan to the Milton Village rezoning, to talking in East Milton about rezoning. People cherish the physical character of their neighborhood. And so we're being compelled by the state to do rezoning. We've got to do it adjacent to transit. We want to do it in a way that is going to really try to preserve that physical character as much as possible. So the final outputs that this scheme kind of spits out is a unit capacity of 2,625 units, slightly above the 2,461 that is our kind of minimum threshold. We tried to get as close to that as we could. What we found was that, given sort of the size and shape of these districts, if you started to make adjustments that kind of brought that number down closer to 2,461, it would throw off our overall density. Or the adjustment, like say you said 44 units per acre in Granite Ave North, or you said four stories in Milton Station West, that got us below 15%, or it got us below 2,461. So this thing is as tightly calibrated as we could have gotten it. The overall acreage of all of these sub-districts is 145, way beyond the 50, that's the minimum. And then we are at a modeled density of 15.3, so just slightly above that minimum of 15 units per acre. So these are the detailed zoning parameters. We did some of the big zoning parameters on the last one. But this one will just show you the different setback requirements that we have, building height in both stories and feet. This is all designed to match as closely as possible. Where we have existing zoning for housing, we've tried to match that in the Elliott Street Corridor and Blue Hills Parkway corridors, 15 foot in the front, 20 feet in the rear, 20 feet combined on either side setback. That's in the existing zoning today. Where we don't have multifamily zoning, we've tried to match what the dimensional parameters of the existing multifamily housing are. And so this is kind of what we've come up with. So I mentioned earlier, in the Milton Station, Central Ave Station Subdistrict, there were two, and I'll zip back real quick just to show you. There are two kind of hatched districts on our map over here in sort of the yellow and the green. These are our mandatory mixed-use districts. When HLC came out with their guidelines, in the first sort of set of final guidelines they came out with, they basically said, "You can allow mixed use in your zoning district, but you can't require it." And the reasoning for that is because the law says that towns need to pass multifamily zoning. And this is just a planning and zoning thing, but multifamily and mixed use are entirely different things in the eyes of kind of land use law. And so if you were going to do multifamily by right, it couldn't require a mixed-use component. A lot of towns found this to be really problematic because some of the places they were looking to zone that were most appropriate for multifamily housing, near transit, in amenity-rich regions, kind of put their commercial tax base at risk. And I'll give you an example. If you took the building where Steel and Rye is, and you decided to redevelop, and you said, "Well, mixed use is allowed, but it's not required. I am going to build an apartment building on the Steel and Rye site." That's great, we need more multifamily housing, but now we lose that commercial amenity, and we lose that commercial tax base. Because even though mixed use was allowed, if the property owner doesn't want to do it, they don't have to do it. A lot of towns wanted to preserve their commercial tax base and really not put it at risk, and so basically petitioned the state to kind of amend their guidelines, which they did in August. And so now we get to create what's called a mandatory mixed-use sub-district that can be as large as up to 25% of our unit capacity. So we've decided to use this tool in the sort of Milton Village-Central Ave area. So when we get to town meeting, there's going to be two zoning articles that town meeting is going to be asked to look at. One of them is going to be the article that does all of this stuff that we're talking about tonight, and kind of amend the zoning bylaw to create this district. The second one is going to be an article to amend that to create this mandatory mixed-use zone, so that we sort of get everything through and kind of keep things in their kind of distinct lanes. Because we want to do the mandatory mixed use because we don't want to put our commercial amenities at risk. We have a very tiny commercial tax base. We want to use all the tools that are available to us to make sure that if someone wants to do a redevelopment under the zoning, they're not putting commercial uses at risk. We don't have enough space to do both Milton Village and East Milton, because that would add up to more than 25% of our unit capacity. But our thinking is, again, because we are doing relatively lower-density zoning in East Milton compared to what we could potentially do to make room for that special permit zoning process that we were discussing, one of the requirements of the special permit zoning will be a mixed-use requirement. So because we're creating special permit zoning that we think is going to be more attractive to the development community, we're going to use that tool to incentivize and require mixed use. So we've been talking about unit capacity. Unit capacity is sort of the number that's been flying around, 2,461. This is part of HLC's definition of reasonable size. This is where this number comes from, is because they said reasonable size means both physical geography and what's inside that geography. And a reasonable sub-district or a reasonable zoning district will be able to accommodate a certain amount of units. Unit capacity is math, and it's an entirely theoretical number that HLC is using. And it's an entirely theoretical number that HLC is using to create as an objective as possible measure of what a zoning bylaw is going to produce. Because otherwise, there's really no way for them to know, outside of doing intensive analysis on 177 different zoning bylaws, how many units could potentially be produced under the MBTA Communities Act. So they've created this compliance model, they've created this tool that does this math problem that spits out this number. It's not rooted in on-the-ground conditions. All right? So HLC has not gone into the 177 MBTA communities and said, we're going to look at where your districts are, we think that this is how much density each of these different parcels can, can have. It's all based in math, it's all based in numbers, it's all based in parcels on a map. It's very, it's very easy to look at that and think of it as a predictive tool. HLC is saying, we've got to zone for 2,461 units, we're going to get 2,461 units, we're not going to get 2,461 units. And I'll explain all the different ways why that's not the case. So unit capacity only takes into account the geography that you've plugged into the model and the dimensional parameters that you've plugged into the model. It doesn't take into account any of the other myriad non-zoning land use regulations that a town might have. Wetlands regulations that limit the developable area of a parcel. Floodplain regulations that limit the developable area of a parcel and put restrictions on the types of development that could happen in the floodplain. Historic districts and demolition delay bylaws. We are in the process of trying to adopt a local historic district in Milton Village, which would, if and when it passes, apply to several of the parcels in that Milton Station sub-district. The compliance model is not taking into account the design guidelines that are going to go into that historic district. And then building and fire codes. One of the things that's really important to understand, especially when we talk about a three-unit building, three units being the minimum size of a multifamily building under state law, when you go from two units to three units in terms of development, you trigger different aspects of the building code and different aspects of the fire code. So if you are a property owner that has a single-family house, you can, under this zoning, get your building permit and build a second unit and you're off to the races. A third unit will require two means of egress and a sprinkler system throughout the house, which you don't have. No one has a sprinkler system in their single-family house. It's a significant cost, it's a significant barrier to multifamily development that, again, the compliance model is going to look at a parcel that says you can have three units and they say, this is a three-unit parcel. But the real-life conditions by which that three-unit building may or may not get built are not taken into account by this model. So all of these regulations that I mentioned would still apply to proposed projects in our districts and could affect the size of developments and could affect whether developments happen at all. So the reason for all of this is because the unit capacity calculation treats every parcel as a blank canvas, right? So we are zoning on Granite Ave, and there are no houses in the Granite Ave sub-district. So that is effectively a blank canvas. There's buildings there, but for housing purposes, there are no existing units. But almost everywhere else, there are existing units. And so the diagram here, you know, kind of tries to kind of lay it out. You've got an existing use of a two-family house, a duplex. The compliance model treats that as an undeveloped parcel and says, if your zoning says you can build three units on a parcel, or in this case, you can build four units on a parcel, then that is a unit capacity of four. From the perspective of municipal impacts, which I think a lot of people are concerned with, on top of, you know, design and all of these other things, the modeled unit capacity figure is far less relevant than the net new units. And net new units is basically your modeled unit number minus your existing unit number. So in this case, there's a unit capacity of four, but there's only two net new units because there were already two units in that, on that parcel already. Two units worth of kids in the schools, two units worth of toilets flushing into the sewer system, you know, all of those impacts for those two units are already being realized by the town. So I want to just sort of take a run through our map just to show you that the zoning, which, which again, is, this is all on paper and this is all a math problem, we have a zone capacity in these sub-districts of something like 2,600 units, as we showed on that other slide. And so in, in the, in the Matapan Station sub-district, that's 228 units. In the Blue Hills Corridor, that's 175 units. 480 units in the Elliott Street Corridor, 618 in the Milton and Central Station sub-districts, 171 units in Granite Ave North, 530 on Granite Ave South, and 423 in East Milton. So this is what the compliance model is saying. In these geographies, with these zoning parameters that you've produced, these are the number of units that could conceivably, if every single parcel got developed and was developable, this is how many units could potentially sort of happen. But in a lot of these cases, there are already existing housing units. You know, as we mentioned, on Granite Ave, there's no existing housing, so those are all, those are net new units. In East Milton, in the Business District at least, not a ton of housing, so the net new unit figure is probably closer to the model capacity. But everywhere else you're seeing, oops, sorry, you know, significant differences between what the model is saying the district is capable of producing and the actual number of new units that we'll see, again, from a municipal impact perspective, units that are new, that aren't already taken into account in our budget and on our streets. 412 net new in the Milton Station District, 70 net new in the Elliott Street District, 83 net new in Matapan Station Subdistrict, 109 net new in the Blue Hills Ave, Blue Hills Corridor District. So already, you know, we're seeing, the model is spitting out a number that is, again, theoretical and used for just comparison and analytical purposes by the state. The reality, and again, this is assuming that every single parcel that can be redeveloped will be redeveloped, which again, almost certainly will not happen. Every parcel in town today, since 1938, has not been redeveloped. These are things that are at the whim of hundreds of individual property owners making hundreds of individual decisions about their home. And so this is just one thing to keep in mind when we talk about what is going to be the pace of change, what is going to be the effect of this zoning on the physical environment of our town. I, I don't want to say that there's not going to be change, I'm not going to, I don't want to say that no one will avail themselves of this zoning, but I think even before we get into a discussion of parcel by parcel, what decision is this property owner going to make, we've already reduced the number of units that we're going to see by almost So the way that we developed these sub-districts is we tried to take advantage of where we already had existing multifamily housing. We don't have any compliant districts, but we have built multifamily housing. And what you can do is you can zone under or on top of, depending on your perspective, your existing multifamily housing. And so, as I said earlier, we've tried to make the dimensional requirements in these sub-districts match the existing housing stock as closely as possible. And that by rezoning existing multifamily properties, we're able to set the pace of redevelopment and ensure the dramatic change doesn't happen in a compressed timeframe. And I'll show you how that works using the Milton Station Subdistrict as an example. So, you know, we talked about the unit capacity and the net new units in one of the previous slides of these existing multifamily buildings. But I also wanted to show you sort of the year that each of these buildings was built. So 131 Elliott Street, the most recent example, hasn't even opened yet, 2023. 2010, 36 Central, another multifamily building on Central Ave. 2014, 50 Elliott Street. 1964, 36 Elliott Street. And then 2003, 88 Wharf Street. So again, we're creating zoning, we're creating a sub-district that rezones, I'll use 131 Elliott Street as an example. So 131 Elliott Street now has 38 units on it. Under our new zoning, it can probably have between 40 and 45 units. That's 38 property owners that own a condo in 131 Elliott Street. The condo association is the owner of the parcel, they're the owner of the building. They are the entity that makes the decision whether or not they're going to avail themselves of MBTA Communities zoning to redevelop. They are in the newest building in town and they have property rights to add between five and seven additional units to their building. I contend that that will not happen in our lifetime or our children's lifetime. It's a brand-new building and the juice is not worth the squeeze when you have a new building and you're only getting a certain number of new units that you're allowed to build on your parcel. And so the reason I put the year that these properties were developed is even though each of these properties may get additional units under the new zoning, the likelihood of them being redeveloped in any kind of reasonable timeframe is vanishingly small. The exception on this slide is obviously 36 Elliott Street, the old Milton Hill House, which was built in 1964. You know, people live in that building, it's still an operating building, it is a rental building. It has, you know, a relatively antiquated site plan, there's a ton of surface parking. If you were doing it over again, you might design that building and that site differently. You know, that's a legitimate redevelopment site. So I think in the sort of medium-term future, under this zoning, you may see a redevelopment at 36 Elliott Street. But you won't see one on most of the other parcels in this sub-district. You know, Two Adams Street, where the Extra Space Storage Building is, also a redevelopment site, we already have multifamily zoning on that site. Folks, if you've been following this stuff for long enough, you may remember, prior to the Great Recession, there was a project proposal for the parking lot in front of the Extra Space Building. That could potentially be a redevelopment site as well. But this, again, is where it's really important that you consider some of the other non-zoning land use regulations. We are putting, or we're attempting to put, a local historic district in Milton Village that will protect all of these buildings from what people may consider to be sort of the worst types of redevelopment. And so I just want to underscore that there's a number that the compliance model is spitting out, but as you start to peel back the layers, you start to see that the pace of change is, is something that we've been trying to control as much as we possibly can. Because again, these are existing housing, either single-family houses or multifamily buildings, and people are going to make, hopefully economically rational decisions and not demolish their brand-new building. I can't make any predictions, though, but I hope they don't do that. So we've been talking a lot about geography and we've been talking a lot about dimensional parameters, but I want to get into sort of the other half of the zoning bylaw, which is the review procedures and the development standards. So the dimensional requirements do a lot of work in terms of setting the physical parameters by which buildings get built. Height, density, setbacks, you know, you can't build lot line to lot line, you can't build a thousand-story building. The other part of this is the site plan review procedures. These are as-of-right projects, which again, means if you check all the boxes in the zoning, you get your building permit. But we are allowed to subject these projects to site plan review. And site plan review is a process that's conducted by a planning board. The planning board can set reasonable conditions on a project to regulate design, physical impacts, lighting, circulation, to make sure that projects are not putting their driveway right through a crosswalk. You know, is the type of thing that you want to look at in site plan review. There are a number of site plan review procedures that are laid out in the zoning, and I'm not going to go through every single one of them, but material submission requirements, you know, public hearing, you've got to have a public hearing in front of the planning board. So your neighbor can put a deck on the back of their house, if it's zoning compliant, and they don't have to tell you, and they can just do it, and that's fine. But if someone's going to be putting a multifamily building up next door to you, you're going to get a letter in the mail and it's going to say, come to this public hearing to learn about this project and talk to the planning board about it. The site plan review procedures are there so that the planning board can, can kind of bring to bear on these projects certain development standards. And these are things that are beyond the dimensional standards that say, this is what we want these buildings to look like, this is how we want these sites to be designed. So there's a couple of things in these development standards that we think are really important to kind of make sure that these projects are going to work in our neighborhoods. Parking maximums for residential uses. So this is to ensure that projects don't produce excessive parking, which would bring additional traffic and congestion to Milton Streets. We set a maximum number of parking spaces that you can, you can produce. So in a parking minimum situation, which is typical under zoning, if you've got a three-unit house and you say, the minimum parking requirement is one space per unit, you could have a developer or a property owner that says, well, I want everyone in my, in my project to have two cars, we're going to build six parking spaces. And now you've got a big parking lot in the backyard and you've got six new cars coming up and down the street, which adds congestion to the town. In a parking maximum scenario, which is, we believe, appropriate in what is overwhelmingly a transit-oriented district, we're saying, in a three-unit building, the most you can build is three parking spaces. So that you don't see a situation where there are more parking spaces that are needed and you're getting more cars in the neighborhood than you want. And it's, and these are projects that are going to select for people that are going to have a restricted number of cars in their household. Just to kind of show you, you know, in the region, you know, how this bears out, in a survey of 200 multifamily buildings in the inner core, the Metropolitan Area Planning Council found that an average of 30% of zoning required parking spaces were empty at peak times. So empty overnight in a residential development, empty during the day in a commercial development. So this indicates that zoning is not the best way to regulate how much parking it is. It's using the knowledge of the development community and the people that are actually building these projects to know how much parking their tenants and their users are going to need. We have open space requirements. Dimensionally, there is just a strict open space requirement that you can't build lot line to lot line, you've got to have setbacks, you've got to have open space. For larger projects, there's going to be a requirement for there to be recreational space for children or common space for families. There are development standards around landscaping that provides visual interest in screening. So there's a lot of open space and landscaping-related dimensional standards. And then design standards about building orientation, the location of building entrances, site planning. So these are all things that the planning board will now have tools beyond just the building is this tall and has this many units, to be able to subject to these projects to make sure that they have a look and feel that, you know, that is appropriate for their context. So finally, there are affordable housing requirements, and there's, there's been discussed, a lot of discourse, and I read, I read things, that, that, that there's no, that the law doesn't have affordable housing requirement, there's no affordable housing requirement, there's an affordable housing requirement. The, the HLC guidelines allow towns to have their zoning code require up to 10% of units be deed-restricted affordable. And so these would be units that would count towards the subsidized housing inventory. They set the number at 10% because what they don't want to do is have towns effectively weaponize affordable housing requirements to make projects economically unfeasible. So you can imagine in a town like Abington, setting a 33% affordability requirement, where those are, those are units that are definitionally, you can't collect the same amount of rent because they're affordable, you can't collect the same amount of sales price. And so someone has to subsidize those units, and that's the developer. When you set a percentage that's too high, the project doesn't make economic sense and you just can't build it. So HLC has set a 10% max that you can put in as-of-right into your zoning. The guidelines allow for a greater affordability requirement, up to 20%, if you provide an independent financial analysis that demonstrates that a project is still feasible if it has a higher affordability requirement. So we've got the 10% requirement in our zoning, we're in the process of trying to procure a independent financial analysis to see how far we can, we can get our affordability requirement up. We've got 12% in other multifamily zonings that we've done. We're going to try to get as much as we can, and that'll have to be subject to a future zoning amendment at town meeting. So I'm, I'm almost done. I want to wrap up because I haven't had a chance to do this in a while, just to sort of reacquaint folks with some of our planning goals that have been established, our master plan, our housing production plan, some of our other planning processes that we've done, and kind of just outline how MBTA Communities can be a tool to achieve these goals. So our master plan, which has been in effect since 2015, is going to be up for update pretty soon, has a ton of stuff about, you know, the direction that we want the town to go in. One of the objectives of the master plan is to increase and expand the range of housing types and to create smaller housing units. The overwhelming majority of housing units in the town of Milton are single-family houses. We don't have nearly as much rental housing as other communities, we don't have nearly as much multifamily housing, we don't have nearly as many smaller units. And so the master plan has identified this as a goal to create different housing opportunities for different types of people. Our housing production plan identifies a priority for a greater diversity of housing types. stock, again, mirroring the master plan, has goals for new rental developments, has goals for housing for seniors or single individuals through one-bedroom units. So even though we're not allowed to require age restrictions, age-restricted housing is allowed to be produced under the zoning, just like anything else. And the thing that you have to understand about age-restricted housing or affordable housing is, it's impossible to produce that housing unless you've got zoning to do it. It's impossible to create affordable single-family units in the town of Milton. The land is too expensive, the economic incentives are there, the construction is too expensive, you can't do it. You need the economies of scale inherent in multifamily housing to do things like age-restricted housing, supportive housing, affordable housing. And so, actually creating byright multifamily zoning provides a tool to do that. The final report of the Equity and Justice for All Advisory Committee focused on affordable housing, and again, even though there's only a 10% requirement, we're going to try to crank that up as much as we can. The fact of the matter is, 10% of MBTA communities' units is more than the 0% of a byright subdivision that we're producing today. And so, multifamily housing is the doorway for more affordable housing in our community. And finally, we've got ongoing climate change and sustainability planning. We've got a climate planning, an action plan committee. We're a green community, we're working on climate change resiliency efforts. Transportation emissions are the number-one contributor to greenhouse gases in the United States. Enabling more people to live near transit and to live a car-light or even car-free lifestyle is the most effective thing that individual cities and towns have in their control, and that starts at land use. And so, households in denser, more walkable neighborhoods have been proven to have a lower carbon footprint than households in single-family neighborhoods. And that just bears out, when you look at this, you know, household CO2 map, you know, Milton is out there, kind of surrounded by these light green parcels, and you can just see the sort of, the denser neighborhoods in Brookline, Boston, Quincy are killing us on household CO2. So it's climate policy, it's affordability policy, it's equity policy, it's a way for us to achieve our planning goals. That's all I've got, so I think...
Thank you.
So I think, I'm going to stop my share here, and so, like I said earlier, we've got folks in the Zoom, we've got folks in the room. If you're on Zoom and you'd like to talk, please raise your hand, just leave it up, you'll be entered into a queue. And then, in the in-person, so we're going to be alternating between in-person and Zoom, so just try to be patient. But I'll say, the first four names that we have on our sign-in sheet are John Gis Driscoll, Christine Hodlin, Matt Morong, Jack Cook. So we'll call on you when you actually come up, but if I just called your name and you're in one of the overflow rooms, try to make your way down to the blute, and we'll hear from you. So we'll start with our in-person. If John Driscoll is here, if you want to come up, and give your name and address for the record, please.
John Driscoll, 718 Randolph Ave. I would like to thank all five of you for doing the job you have been doing through this, and you dealt a bad hand, and you're doing a great job. I just want to thank you, and you put a lot of hours in it. People ought to be very thankful, staying here to 12:00, 12:30 at night, doing a great job. But I'd like to speak, sort of, as a neighbor. I'm getting a 40-unit building from 40B, like, on a half-acre piece of parcel. So everybody that's all for this, just be careful what you wish for other people's neighborhood, it's not fun, all right? It's not fun. And I live in a nice little house, a house behind me is nice, and I'm ending up with a 40-unit building. So just be careful what you wish on other people, and I don't even know why they call this the MBTA, because they can't run a train. So I don't know why we even call it that, but I just want to thank you, you know, doing a great job, and just be careful what you wish on other people's neighborhoods, it's not fun.
Are you, uh...
Yeah. We have Deborah Felton on Zoom. Deborah, if you can give your name and address.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Hello?
Hi, Deborah.
Okay, great. Hello. Deborah Felton, 20 Willoughby Road, town meeting member from Precinct 2. First of all, I want to thank you, Tim. Every time I hear your presentation, and I've heard it quite a few times, I do learn something new. I want to go on record that I support the MBTA community law for multifamily housing, and will vote yes at town meeting to the Warren article sponsored by the Select Board for the following reasons. I'm an attorney admitted to practice in Massachusetts, and I have been sworn to uphold the Constitution and the laws of the state of Massachusetts. Similarly, all public officials are sworn in to uphold the laws of the Commonwealth. The MBTA community law and its guidelines are legal. There has been no determination made that this law is unconstitutional or illegal. Please do not underestimate the benefit this would have for the community, and it is part of my neighborhood also. We are stronger and more creative, working together to build housing in compliance with this law and be a part of a diverse community that provides homes for all people. I urge the planning board to support this article, and I do thank you for all the time and work. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Deborah.
We've got Christine Hodlin next, and then, again, just as a reminder, Matt Morong, Jack Cook, and then Megan Walsh and Karen Friedman-Hanna. If any of those folks are in the overflow, you can make your way down to the blute, you'll be speaking shortly.
Christine Hodlin. I live at 112 Maple Street, which is in the Elliott Street corridor. I also own a two-family on Everdeen Road, over near the Tucker School District that my husband and I purchased when we first moved here with our children. One of my sons lives there, he and his wife have two young children, and they can't afford to buy a house in Milton or anywhere close by here in this area, so this is very personal to me. Our house, we have four bedrooms in it, and all of my kids are gone. Luckily, my grandchildren are all nearby, and they come and visit a lot, and so, we're not ready to sell, but when we are, I really would like to stay here, because I have two young families with six grandchildren in this town, and I like to be close by to them. So, like everyone else that already came up, I can't thank all of you enough for all the work that has gone on here. It's amazing to listen to this over and over again, Tim, I've heard it as well, and I can't believe how many meetings you've held on the subject all over the summer and the spring, and to go from two years ago when this began to what was presented to us today is amazing. So I think a lot of work has been done on all the individual subdivisions and what's needed, and in trying to be compliant with the law, but also trying to respect the neighborhoods in the building as best as you can, and so, I really appreciate that. The article has very thoughtful design and standards that have been applied that will help to keep the neighborhoods in each individual community as close to what they are today. And I'm sure that was not easy to try to prepare and put that together for all of them. It's not like you had one that you could apply it to, it was, each one of these individually had to be thought out. I'm especially happy to see the open space standards that are included in this presentation. And I also go on record as supporting this article. This article is in compliance with a law that we need to have done by December 31st. I'm a town meeting member as well in Precinct 2. I'm sure that this planning board isn't done with this on December 31st, if it passes at town meeting. I'm sure there'll be enhancements and modifications to it and changes, and who knows what the state will ask you to do after this, but I'm sure we'll continue to make it a better article and better zoning as we keep going, just like we do other ones. And I just want to add, like me, all of you elected officials take an oath of office, as Deborah said, to uphold the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the laws, and I, this is a law. This is a law that was passed by the state, and we are being asked to abide by it, and I feel that we should respond as such. I fully support this article, and I would encourage everyone else here, too, as well. So, thank you again.
We have Ian Boyd on the Zoom. Ian, if you can unmute and give your name and address.
Hello, I'm sorry, this is Ian Boyd. I'm at 44 Cliff Road in Milton, Massachusetts. I, again, also would like to thank the board and all the Thocan staff for the hard work they've been doing for this, and I know there's a lot of heated emotions around the plan, and it's been, you know, there's been a lot of news articles about what's going on in the Annapheus in town about this. When looking at the actual lines that have been drawn, I am in the Elliott Street corridor, and I also support multifamily housing, and I do think that we do need to address the housing prices in Massachusetts. The lines, as they are drawn, do seem to exclude a lot of neighborhoods and close-by parcels that are left dense, and the concentration along the river and the transit line does seem to be a bit arbitrary. I know that there's math involved, I know that we're using models to help design this, but I do think that some care should be taken to broaden the shoulder burden that we all take part of this, and that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Ian.
We have Matt Morong next on the list. And again, just as a reminder, following that, Jack Cook, Megan Walsh, Karen Friedman-Hanna, Ellen Stoddard, Eileen Sharkey. So if you're in the overflow room, take your way down.
All right. Good evening. Thank you, my heartfelt thanks. I think there's been a ton of work that's gone into this process. Tim and Josh, holy cow, thank you for all that you've done. My name is Matt Morong, and I live at 136 Elliott Street. So since January 2022, when word of the passing of this state law was introduced to the Milton Planning Board, I've watched Milton's response to this law eagerly. This is a matter of extreme interest to me as an architect who's trained in planning, who works in the rail and transit industries, and lives in the heart of the transit area, kind of hits every point for me.
Excuse me, Matt?
Yes.
I just got a message that maybe you can move the microphone closer? Yeah, thanks.
Is this better? I hope so. Okay. I'm back where I started with my first comment to the planning board, you know, there have been a lot. On an optimistic note, the planning process hasn't been straightforward at all, but I'm appreciative for the debate that allowed this law to be vetted, questioned, and strengthened, to become the product that has been submitted by the Select Board and we're discussing tonight. There are a lot of reasons to support this bill, let me share a few. Despite its flaws, which we've discussed, the Matapan Line is an asset to this community with enormous potential, and is one of the primary reasons why I moved to Milton in the first place. Auto dependence is literally and figuratively toxic, and development in proximity to transit, especially if the T gets its act together, can have enormous benefits. Infrastructure and municipal services gain efficiencies when density increases, as evidenced by the financial analysis prepared for the planning board and all of Milton can share in the financial benefits of this zoning. Multifamily structures are inherently more energy-efficient than single-family structures, and multifamily housing has the potential to reduce home ownership costs and open up this important source of financial and social stability to more people. The character of Milton is important, but it's essential to remember that character is both physical and human. There's open space and trees and beautiful buildings that define character, but even more important are the people who make a place special. This building is everything it can to retain the physical character of Milton while opening it up to more people. And at the end of the day, that's what makes this place vibrant and welcoming and warm. I consider myself lucky to live in one of the densest parts of Milton. What I love about it is the people who I say hi to as I walk my dog on the Nponset River Trail in the morning, it's the staff, it's the Steel and Ride bakery counter who support me with my caffeine habit, Meredith knows. The serendipity, the friendliness, the neighborliness, and the hospitality that we all share will only be amplified as we open Milton to more people. There are lots of ways we can improve on this bill, too. It isn't perfect. The planning board had discussed presenting an interim zoning article, and I suggest that this is the interim zoning article. Following the passage of this law, we have much more to do to address the shortcomings and side effects of this law. I hope that the planning board takes a proactive approach to implement remedies to these issues. We can find ways to make Granite Ave by the American Legion Post more livable, reducing the impacts of traffic, and perhaps even making it walkable. We can take an activist position to support the MBTA, and we can further increase Milton's commercial tax base as people work from home more and more, we can give them new places to grab lunch, a coffee, get childcare, or a quart of milk. My motivation to push so hard for this is personal, professional, and moral. Housing is a fundamental human right, and obtaining it is becoming more and more difficult. Opening our community will go a long way to alleviating this existential crisis for our region and our nation.
Matt, we're three minutes.
Okay. I've got like one line.
Thank you.
In regards to livability and affordability, and at the end of the day, I believe that Milton will be stronger for it. Thank you.
Thank you, very much.
We've got George on the Zoom. George, if you can give us your name and address for the record.
Sure. I'm at 290 Elliott Street. I jumped on a little bit later, so I may have missed this, but I've got two questions. Will there be any architectural or, you know, physical appearance standards applied to make sure, as, you know, we add new multifamily housing, that it all kind of makes sense and has a, you know, a nice look, a polished look, and I know Boston sometimes incorporates or will add special standards, example like, each house needs to have shingles on the front face, you know, that's just one example, I'm not saying that should be a requirement, but that's just an example of what I'm talking about. My second question is, I don't know if this, if these, if this board is, if this is an appropriate question for this audience, but I don't want to ask it anyway. Somewhere in Boston, is there a potential for us to receive a tax break in the form of a residential exemption if you live at the property that you, that are contained within these new multifamily zones? And I think that would help make this project a lot more appealing, as well as, you know, we can help lessen the tax burden in exchange for, you know, allowing, you know, higher-density housing. That's all I've got, I'll let you guys answer. And thank you so much for all the hard work. I know a lot went into this, this is my first meeting, but I know there's a lot that goes into these type of projects, so thank you very much for all your work, and I'll let you guys answer. Thanks.
Thank you, George.
George, yeah, could you repeat your name for the record, please?
Sure. It's George Simon, and I'm at 290 Elliott Street.
Thank you.
I'm right across from the Valley Road T-stop, almost.
Thank you, George. And we're going to let all of the residents complete their comments and questions, and then we will then have a period following to answer all of your questions, so we will do so at that time. Thank you.
Great, thanks.
We've got Jack Cook next on the list, and then, again, as a reminder, on the in-person list, Megan Walsh, Karen Friedman-Hanna, Ellen Stoddard, Eileen Sharkey, Marcia Grills, Katie Lagone.
All right, thanks. I'm going to think about this in more simplistic terms. I saw a letter from the HLC...
You can just, sorry, state your name and address.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm Jack Cook, 15 quote-uncircle.
Great, thank you.
I saw a letter from the HLC to the town that claims that Milton has 404 acres of developable station area land. Now, if that's true, at 15 units per, that's 6,060 units. Now, even half of that would be 3,030 units, I don't know if they're five-acre parcels or not, but I live off of Granite Ave, and I'm looking at this building, one, two, three, four, five buildings. That's a complex. You're going to put a complex on the other side of my house. We have about 100 people in the neighborhood, and you are going to add 1,000 right across the street, 1,000 people, okay? Cars, we don't know about sewer lines, where are you going to run that? The river's on the other side, you're going to run it right through my neighborhood? 500 toilets, 500 sinks, with little kids flushing who knows what? You got parking? There's nowhere to walk from that area. The traffic is outrageous, we couldn't get out of the street tonight. I got a bunch of my neighbors here, there's a few of them in the other room. You can't walk anywhere. Danger... Dangerous road. In the summertime, there's actual drag racing going on down there. All right? Drag racing. The cops come, they get them out, they're flying. It's very dangerous as it is. In the morning, you can't get out, and when it's not clogged, it's a racing strip. The Green Initiative thing, that's laughable. People will be, will have their cars. I heard something about a bus stop. That's a joke. A traffic light will not work. You are going to choke us. You are going to choke East Milton Square. There's no parking there now. And if you're going to add 3,000 people, I mean, we are, one, two, three, four, five buildings on the other side of my street, five apartment buildings. Do you know anybody that lives in Milton or buys in Milton that wants to look at five apartment buildings across the street from them? We talk about the law. Laws are there to protect people. What's, who's protected or who's being helped by this law? People that don't live in the town. And who's it hurting? People that live in the town. That's backwards. The town needs to be noncompliant if they can't come up with a more equitable solution. We are being targeted. It's a complex. It isn't one building. We're all for reasonable zoning. A building with some nice greenery, okay, couple hundred units, nice, right? I'm all for that. Five buildings? There's a lot of room over there. Five buildings? Six stories? I won't see the sun from where I live. Six stories. Now, that map that you had shows a big horseshoe. I don't see anything in the middle of town. Now, I don't know if these 404 acres that the HLC claims Milton has are five acre parcels or not. I don't know that. But unless you can come up with something that's fairer to me and my neighbors, I have a bunch of friends of mine that are here now, and I agree with my high school classmate, John Driscoll, they said, watch what you wish for about someone else's neighborhood. We feel like we're, this is a classic type of situation. It smacks of a NIMBY type of situation, because I don't see anything in the middle of town, nothing. And they say, again, 404 acres, 15 units per, 6,060 acres conceivably. And you got 1,000 or 700 in my backyard. It's not right. Thanks.
We've got Matt Lagon on the Zoom. Matt, if you can give us your name and address for the record.
Oh, hi, it's actually Katie. I'm sorry, I was there in the room and I had to leave, so you can take me off the list. Can you hear me?
Yes, Katie, welcome.
Thank you.
If you'd say your name.
Oh, sorry, it's Katie Legon, 544 Brook Road. First, I want to say that sometimes when I'm listening to some of the Select Board meetings and other meetings, that I'm a little disappointed in the way that people who want to challenge the MBTA Communities Act are treated. They're labeled as unwelcoming, among other things, by members of our elected boards for questioning zoning and possible building of an additional 2,400 units in our town. Sorry, I don't mean to sound negative, but it bothers me when I watch the meetings, that particular issue. And I, and most people I think that I know are in favor of some new housing if the zoning is thoughtful and reasonable and includes affordable units. The planning board has been presented with an impossible task, finding zoning for 24 units or you're out of compliance. There's nothing in the middle. I also know there's a lot of conversations going on about how the zoning will result in a gradual change. The current plan put forth by the Select Board includes approximately, I think it's 800 units on those two lots on Granite Ave, that could be off there a little bit, but one of the lots isn't even within the half-mile radius of the train. And this particular lot, as I understand, is owned by the state. And if it's turned over to a developer, we'll have hundreds of units all at one time. I also noticed, as somebody else has mentioned, that there's a lot of streets in that sort of circular area that aren't included in the zoning, and it's a little bit questionable. And I'd say it's not a good look. So if we have to go outside this half-mile radius of our so-called rapid transit, then I think the number that the state is asking us to zone for is just, it's too much. It's, there are too many units. And lastly, the talk of the law, I hear over and over that we must comply with the law. When we were tasked with finding land for our new school, we found a way to challenge the law regarding the conservation land. So I'm kind of confused as to why we're so afraid to challenge this so-called law at this time. And I have one question, too, maybe you can answer at the end, about 40B. And if these units go up, how it affects our ratio? It seems to me that we're going to be forever chasing that ratio if units go up under this law. Okay, thank you so much, and thank you again for all your hard work.
Thank you, Katie.
Next on the list, we have Megan Walsh. And then again, as a reminder, after Megan, Karen Friedman-Hanna, Ellen Stoddard, Eileen Sharkey, Marcia Grills. We just heard from Katie and Robert Rosowski next.
Thank you, Megan. Hello, Megan Walsh. I live on 107 Church Street in East Milton. I'm a town meeting member. I'm no stranger to affordable housing. I grew up in South Boston, rent control, and in the Housing Authority in T Street on Orton Marauder Way. I'm a huge supporter of affordable housing. However, when you look at the numbers and you look at the math, and you see that 1,100 of these units are falling in East Milton Square, which is already congested, we have traffic backed up from Granite all the way to Basset. Basset is now backed up all the way to Church, wrapped around every morning. It takes me a half an hour every morning to get to Pierce to drop my children off. It is absolute insanity. And the mere fact that East Milton is going to hold the additional 50% of the non-MBTA, I don't know how you can call that fair and equitable. That is absolutely asinine. And when you look at the other areas that are being untapped, it's completely unfair. Our children are at risk every single day. We have people cutting through. They're speeding. We've had several dogs in my neighborhood who have been hit by a car. God forbid it's a child, but if we continue and add an additional potential thousand cars to our already congested traffic, there's going to be tragedy. And this is, this is completely wrong. So considering Granite Ave, you can't get out there. Wood Street, everyone blocks Wood Street. You can't even get out to get, you know, through East Milton Square. It's, it's just absolutely unfair that East Milton should be subjected to the majority of the non-MBTA half-mile buffer. So as a town meeting member, I am not in support of this, and I will not be voting for it. Thank you.
We have Eric Hokinson on Zoom. Eric, if you could unmute and give your name and address.
Yeah, thank you. Eric Hokinson, 583 Elliott Street. Appreciate the opportunity to speak again tonight. Just to extend my thanks to the board, staff, Select Board as well, and all my fellow residents that are, that are here and have been invested in this process. I am in support of the zoning bylaws and the warrant articles associated with them, and in compliance with the law. The other night during a warrant committee meeting, one of the members described compliance with the law, the bet, that the courts would either uphold the law, which included the guidelines, or throw them out. And I think that's an apt description of how some view the process. But I don't want to make that bet, because I think harmoniously increasing the housing stock and the variety of it in Milton won't destroy our community but enrich it. I really want to make sure that my fellow residents understand the law, because it is complex and confusing. The legislature, governor, attorney general, and town council have all been clear that the statute and the guidelines are the law. The state's also been clear that Milton is a rapid transit community, as much as we complain about the T. There will not be 2,461 new housing units, and there's no specific development being proposed. There will still be public processes for the majority of the proposed redevelopments. And finally, the increased housing is projected to have a net positive fiscal impact for the town. I don't believe the bylaws are perfect. I've made suggestions to the boards and town staff, but I think it's really hard to come up with something perfect when you are trying to apply uniform standards to non-uniform areas. However, I do think the zoning will not only provide more diverse housing options and just more housing itself, but it'll also promote a sufficient density to support our local businesses and other amenities in a pedestrian and transit-oriented environment. In short, it will enable us to create a more walkable, livable, and sustainable future for our community, which I know are some of the reasons why people have chosen to live here in Milton. I really encourage, as I do in every comment I send to the planning board, to continue developing the design guidelines and development standards for the sub-districts so that we have a consistent built environment and a character of the community that we all love. I hope that my fellow residents will not bet the future of our town on the certainty of lawsuits from the Commonwealth and the uncertain consequences of which may include significant financial or legal repercussions. I hope we would instead ensure that Milton continues to be a beautiful, welcoming, and vibrant community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Eric, very much.
Karen Friedman-Hanna is the next on the list, and then it's Ellen and Eileen Sharkey.
Good evening, Karen Friedman-Hanna, 3 Norway Road, Town Meeting Member for Precinct 2. So I, too, am in one of the districts, the Elliott Corridor, that is expected to be one of the high-density areas of this, and I am in favor of it. I have reached out to my neighbors. We have a wonderful neighborhood where we have a list of everybody's email addresses, and we know each other, and we all talk with each other. And I reached out to my entire neighborhood, and I got 11 responses so far. Eight of those were strongly in favor of this. Three people did have questions. They didn't express not being in favor of it. They just had some questions about it. And I've told them that I'll be happy to host a meeting to talk more about all of this and to provide them with additional information. But the predominance of what I'm hearing from the neighborhood that is going to be extremely affected by this has all been positive so far. I moved to Milton many years ago, but we moved specifically to that area for T access. We thought it would be a great spot to be able to live and be able to drive, to not have to drive the car everywhere to take it into town, to have our kids be able to utilize it in different ways, and it has worked beautifully for us. We have a beautiful neighborhood. There are some, two-family homes already. Most of them are single-family homes. I can't imagine, from knowing the families that are living there currently, that any of them would be looking to quickly change out of the environment that they have, the living situation that they have, though some may choose to have, you know, making it into, basically, it would be a triple family from a single family. One of the questions that did get raised was, in light of the town voting down the accessory dwelling units, one of the questions that was raised was, would that then be revisited if we go forward with this? Is that something that could be considered? That, it's unclear to me still a little bit whether this means that it would be only single-family homes that would have, be made into basically three units within the single home that's there, or if there could be potentially the house being a two-family house and then an accessory dwelling unit in the back that, you know, so that it's a separate unit, not necessarily the main house being made into the three units. So that was a question, and I think it's a valid question to ask. So in summary, my neighborhood, for the most part, so far, has been very much in favor of this. It is a, it is an area that will be directly affected by this, but we feel that the positives certainly outweigh the negatives, and I will be voting yes, and I urge my other fellow town meeting members to do the same. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We currently have no hands up on the Zoom, so Ellen Stoddard.
Ellen Stoddard's up next. And then the next few names, Eileen Sharkey, Marcia Grills, Robert Rosowski, Lindsay Sands, Jennifer Hunt.
Ellen Stoddard, I live at 251 Canton Ave. Thank you again for all of the work that's been put into this very comprehensive presentation and set of issues, and I thank you for the opportunity to join in on the debate. I'm speaking on behalf of the members of Sustainable Milton tonight to express our support for the Select Board's Town Meeting Articles that would achieve compliance with the rezoning requirements of the MBTA Communities Act. We act, we ask the planning board to withdraw proposed articles that will not achieve compliance and instead focus on shaping compliant zoning rules to ensure the special character of Milton is maintained for current and future residents. Sustainable Milton's mission is to help our community and its leaders reduce waste and create a healthy, vibrant future for all. As part of this mission, we're contributing to the development of Milton's Climate Action Plan. As of 2022, 98% of Milton's greenhouse gas emissions come from buildings and transportation, and the zoning changes in this law would help reduce the carbon footprint of both. While the MBTA law is designed to address the Massachusetts housing supply crisis and not specifically to advance sustainability goals, we think it's absolutely consistent with them. However, sustainability concerns are not the only nor the primary reason we support compliance. We see other many, we see many other potential benefits to the town, including things that have been mentioned tonight, such as walkability, diverse housing stock, and conserving green space by redeveloping parcels that are already developed. Aside from these benefits, we expect that failure to comply with the law would be a major setback from a sustainability perspective. If Milton does not comply with the MBTA Communities Act requirements, we have the potential to lose access to multiple grant programs that have brought in billions, millions of dollars for funding for sustainable infrastructure projects in the past and that are expected to be a major source of funding for critical climate change mitigations going forward. And also likely to have, we will be likely to have to defend ourselves from lawsuits stemming from noncompliance, which would divert significant resources that are better invested in community services and infrastructure. We have heard the calls for increased energy efficiency requirements in the MBTA zoning articles, but instead, we have the opportunity as a town to adopt the specialized opt-in code developed to align with Massachusetts 2050 net-zero carbon emissions roadmap. This approach to improving energy efficiency for our buildings would be fairer and less legally risky, as it would apply to all buildings in the community equally. We believe that we have a shared responsibility to care for our environment and for each other, and when our neighbors thrive, we all thrive. So please don't catastrophize the law or engage in all-or-nothing thinking about where this will lead. We have room and we have resources to welcome more neighbors while maintaining and enhancing the qualities that we love about Milton. Now is the time to take advantage of the opportunity to shape the future of our unique town and make it more attractive for businesses and more affordable for a wider range of residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect timing. It's good.
Still no hands on the Zoom, so Eileen Sharkey is up next. And just, just as a reminder to anyone that is in one of the overflow rooms, if you want to speak and haven't had a chance to sign in, there is a sign-in sheet down here outside the blute, or you can just wait until the very end, and maybe we'll just take people as they go. But thank you, Eileen. And if you can give us your name and address for the record.
Ah, yes. Eileen Sharkey, 35 Caroline Drive. As everyone here knows, Milton is now in the spotlight. But instead of being known as the town that closed its gates to the middle class, we could become known as the town that leads the way in opening the gates a little bit. could become known as the town that leads the way in opening the gates a little bit. The state has done its job in focusing on the housing crisis that we have by passing this law. Tim and his team have done a wonderful job of creating a fair and equitable plan for complying with the law. The Select Board has done its job and endorsed that plan in the warrant article. Now it's time for the planning board and the residents through our town meeting representatives to get the job done. If any town meeting members are listening, I hope that they vote to comply with the law. Everyone deserves a home. The spotlight is on us, and we can lead the way. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have Marsha Grills next. Marsha, if you have your name and address for the record.
My name is Marsha Grills. I live at 30 Landon Road, and I am a town meeting member for Precinct 1. So I'm here today. No surprise, we are in a housing crisis. We need more homes. I think we all only need to look around. Those of us who have lived in the town for a very long time or our entire lives have seen our houses' values increase astronomically, which has unfortunately made it so that our own kids are having a hard time trying to find a home. And, you know, people in the service industry who, you know, who, firemen, nurses, police, can't afford to live in the town, and I think that's really unfortunate. So I'm hoping that this law will, you know, will allow us to increase the number of housing units available to people and encourage more people to purchase with perhaps a little bit lower purchase price. So I am definitely supporting what's on the table right now. And I have to say, I wasn't always in favor. When I started to hear about this in the spring, I had some concerns that what we were being asked to do was a lot. And I do think it is somewhat of a heavy burden for Milton, not impossible. And I was actually comforted when I looked at a lot of the iterations that you folks have gone through and the changes that you've made and the listening that you've done to a point where we're at now, which is a plan that I feel very comfortable with supporting. I think it's a good plan. I think it's a solid plan. I think it's a fair plan. And something that's important to me, and I think important to probably everybody in this room, is to have a plan that allows us to preserve the character and the characteristics that we all value in this town, and I think this plan does that. You know, the setbacks, all of the things involved with planning and design traditionally are being honored. And all of the proposals here are within the current characteristics of each neighborhood that's been affected. So I, I guess, I think that you guys have done an incredible job trying to take a lot of the feedback that you've gotten to come up with what is on the table today. I do support it. And I think that other, another thing that I want to address is the fact that we're still talking about zoning. We're not talking about, this, this law is nothing to do with creating a single structure. And as a longtime resident of Milton, we don't work very fast. In fact, permitting is pretty much at a glacial pace in this town.
We're at three minutes, so just, I know.
Okay, sorry. So anyway, I don't think it's going to happen that fast. I think people could lay that to rest and not be so concerned about that. And I know that the Granite Ave people are concerned. We've heard that tonight. But I also think, too, because of all the restrictions that they bring up, the wetlands, the traffic and all that, that's all going to be taken into consideration when, when someone decides, if someone decides, some developer says, I want to build something here. All of that will be under scrutiny and review and, and I think, you know, won't be the disaster that some people think that it might be. So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
So we do have some hands on the Zoom now. Elaine Benson, if you can give us your name and address.
Hi there. Elaine Benson, 67 Granite Place, and Town Meeting Member, Precinct 7. First, I wanted to take a moment to convey my appreciation for the dedication and the extraordinary efforts that have been put forth by Tim, Josh, and the members of the Planning and Select Boards in their pursuit of compliance with the MBTA Communities Law. As a resident of East Milton for the past six years, my family and I have grown to deeply adore the warm and inviting community that we, that we are lucky to call home. It's been a privilege to have my children attend Milton's highly esteemed schools and for me to actively engage as a town meeting member and as a contributor to the Master Plan Implementation Committee. You know, these experiences have provided me firsthand insight into the sheer dedication and the hard work that's been required to shape the future of our community. In spite of our unwavering dedication and love for this community, the dream of homeownership here has remained frustratingly elusive, and that's primarily due to the challenges associated with affordability. I think our struggle is one that's shared by many families and families that are all grappling with the difficult, difficulty of securing suitable housing or downsizing as they age. The MBTA Communities Law presents a potential step forward towards a brighter future for families like mine who yearn to establish deep roots in this beloved community. While I acknowledge that this law is far from perfect, and I can certainly empathize with my neighbors who've expressed concerns about traffic in East Milton, it's something I contend with daily on my commute to Cambridge for work. I wholeheartedly endorse our community's compliance with the law and the potential positive change that it can usher in. I think that this law is designed to enhance the availability of affordable housing within our community and the communities that are served by the MBTA. It encourages transit-oriented development. It fosters walkable communities replete with access to amenities and public spaces. It promotes sustainability through the increased use of public transportation with the potential to stimulate economic growth in these areas. It also seeks to make housing accessible to individuals across various income levels, thereby forging a more inclusive and interconnected region characterized by accessibility and economic vitality. So once again, I extend my gratitude to all of those who are dedicated to serving our community and who have wholeheartedly embraced the principles of this law. You know, your commitment to compliance while preserving the distinct, or trying to preserve the distinct character of our community is truly commendable. I will be supporting compliance with this law at Town Meeting in December, and I just want to thank you for your time and to all of my neighbors who have taken time out of their busy lives to come out and to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the in-person list, we have Robert Rozowski. And then just as a reminder, the next couple names on the list, Lindsay Sands, Jennifer Hunt, Kathleen O'Donnell.
Good evening. Thank you. Robert Rozowski, 29 Waldo Road, just off of Elliott Street. I first want to thank all the elected officials here, members of the planning board here. We have a few members from the Select Board, and certainly our staff who are hired by the town. A lot of time has been put into this. I know their time and your time is not over on it yet, but I do want to thank you for the time you've put in. It's unpaid time, pretty much, other than our staff, and I'm wondering if you have COTS here for those late-night meetings. But in any case, I'm in favor of the zoning articles, and I think we need to support them for a number of reasons. We definitely need to generate more housing options in addition to only the single-family homes, for town employees to afford to live here, seniors to downsize when they choose, and for new families to have a decent place to live. These articles for new multifamily housing will provide for gradual and stable increases in housing options with the town in full control. The articles are good economically, as they will expand our tax base, and the additional residents will strengthen small businesses in town. Having multifamily housing close to transit will also assist, but not completely solve, the overuse of individual polluting vehicles for transport by placing new housing units near rapid transit, enabling more residents to more easily use public transportation. New housing options will attract a more diverse population, which will strengthen the town. And approving the articles will keep the town in compliance with the law and avoid wasteful potential taxpayer spending, our property taxes, to possibly fight lawsuits that are brought against the town. We have many economic needs in town for our taxes, and fighting a lawsuit to be a law-breaking town is not one of them. There's been a fair amount of misinformation and fear mongering. I'm not going to get into the details, but I implore all residents and particularly town meeting members to get the facts. Democracy is hard. Do your own research. There's going to be a forum. It was announced next week, next Wednesday, November 1st, and you can get a frequently answered questions webpage at Miltonaim.org. That's Milton-A-I-M.org from Affordable, Inclusive Milton. I live in the Rapid Transit Corridor, and I welcome multifamily zoning in my neighborhood. The zoning should be enabled to be tastefully designed, and I believe that this zoning will be a benefit for the town by making our town an even more desirable place to live. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
We have Shali on the Zoom. Shali, if you could unmute and give your name and address.
Hi, Shali Singhhum, 62 Essex Road. I just wanted to echo the many comments of people who have thanked the staff and the town officials for all of the time on this plan. I, I really do hope that this, this goes through and that Milton is one of the towns that is seen as like complying and is helping to move this forward. I think multifamily housing and rapid transit are just so clearly the answers to so many of the problems that we have in the region and overall. And I know a lot of thought has gone into these proposals and a lot of consideration, and so I hope that it goes through on time, and I want to just thank everyone for all of the work on this.
Thank you, Shali.
And then we've, we still have, we'll be going back and forth on the Zoom, but Jennifer Hunt, Kathleen O'Donnell, Mike Zulus, Katie Conlin will be up next on the in-person list.
Hi, excuse me. Lindsay Sands, 6 Waldo Road. I did not write anything out, like many of you. I'm extremely busy. I can't imagine how you find time to do all this. I just had a couple of things I wanted to highlight. I have circulated a letter to our elected officials, so I'm not going to repeat a lot of the things that were set forth in that letter. Some of my concerns have been discussed. I wouldn't say they're necessarily relieved, though. So a couple of things I wanted to mention, you know, I don't believe this is going to happen overnight. I do believe it's going to happen. Healy has a lot of productive incentives she's put on the table. I think a lot of developers and contractors are going to benefit most out of these laws. I strongly disagree with the conversation around sustainability. Again, I ride the trolley. I see no one else from Milton on that trolley, except for one person who also speaks a lot about riding that trolley. I don't need to mention his name. This will add cars to our town. This is not a walking town. There is nowhere to go, really, honestly, except for steel and rye. In East Milton, as people have mentioned, that is nowhere near the trolley. If they want to get downtown, they have to ride, they have to drive their cars to Milton and park and get on that trolley. These cars will add 11,500 metric tons of carbon to, on an annual basis. Unless you require heat pumps and electrification of these homes and restrict natural gas lines, I don't see how this reduces carbon emissions. So I just wanted to oppose those comments. Again, I know we've, a lot of chatter on the reclassification. I did see the letter that came out this week. No disrespect to the EO HLC. I think it was poorly reasoned and written. I don't know if there will be a continual challenge or follow-up to the classification. I strongly encourage it. I do not encourage not complying with the law. I'm for this law. I am for housing for all the reasons people have mentioned. I just think classifying Milton as a rapid transit community is arbitrary, and I think it's very easily challenged, considering Melrose is a commuter town and Arlington got reclassified as an adjacent community for the reason that they have a bus that takes them from the red line into town, much like our system, which is a trolley that takes us from the red line to our town. Not to mention that from the materials I've seen, the MBTA does not have a plan for that trolley beyond eight to 10 years from today. They said those cars do not have a useful life beyond the next eight to 10 years, and that additional improvements to that system will require $200 million. I'm not sure that will be dedicated to our Matapan Trolley. And I think that's most of what I wanted to mention. I am in the Elliott Street Corridor. I, of course, have concerns with overdeveloping that area. I'm all for diversity. I'm all for community. I do have some concerns about commercial space. I would like to know what will be left for commercial zoning for amenities. I guess my time is up, but I'll just end with, like, I think I've said this before, but if the plan was to develop Milton Village and Central Square into Davis Square, I'm all for that. I would love to walk to dinner. I would love all of those things and amenities. I just don't think our town can sustain that and is going to build that, and I think we're going to have a lot of housing, but not a lot of amenities and not a school for all these children. So I'll end with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lindsay.
We have Mike on the Zoom. Mike, if you could unmute and give your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Mike DeCeta. I live at 14 Cantwell Road, which is just outside the Elliott Corridor. This is the first meeting I've attended regarding the zoning articles or the MBTA Communities Law. I fully support both of them. Milton is legally obligated to create more housing and more affordable housing for families. This plan does just that, and as Mr. Zawinski noted, it doesn't demand much more than that from the town. The article is also a small start towards our, fulfilling our intergenerational obligations, including our obligation to combat climate change. No, it's not perfect, and yes, there is absolutely a need for greater commercial development in the areas that the prior speaker just mentioned. I would love to walk to something like Davis Square or even like a mini Davis Square myself, but this is a start. We moved to this neighborhood precisely because it's, because of its proximity to the Matapan Trolley, and that's a, the trolley's something I ride pretty regularly, and it's largely because of my commitment to combating climate change. We should do everything we can to make that option available. Many people have argued that Milton should ignore state law. If we do, what happens next? The governor and the attorney general have both indicated that affordable housing is a paramount goal for them, and as a result of the Boston Globe's coverage of Miss Milton's history of exclusionary zoning, we are likely to be a prime target, not just of the attorney general, but also lawyers for civil rights and other organizations. Mr. Zawinski and other speakers have noted the potential loss of state funding and litigation costs, but if a court finds that we violated the MBTA Communities Law beyond those potential harms, it's possible that the remedies may include a plan foisted on Milton by the plaintiffs or perhaps a special master. Milton does not have a choice about not complying. We can either comply with the MBTA Communities Law with a plan that the town has drafted or one that has been designed by others. I choose the former. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
Next on the list, Jennifer Hunt, and then after that, Kathleen O'Donnell, Katie Conlin, and Jen from Fairmount Ave, who will tell us her name when she gets here.
Welcome.
Jennifer Hunt, 78 Granite Avenue. If you haven't, I'm at the corner of Cortland Circle and Granite Avenue, so if you've waited to get on 93, you have waited in front of my house. As I'm listening to these proposals, the Granite Ave parcel just doesn't seem like it fits with the other parcels. I'm very concerned with adding over 700 units and potentially more than that cars to our little area of town. As anyone who drives into the city can tell you, it's a nightmare in the morning. I leave at 6:30 in the morning, and a lot of times Granite Ave is backed up to Squanton at that early hour. Coming here tonight, I had to leave my, drive, leave my street, and I almost got hit because people are waiting to get on the on-ramp. They were cutting people off. I just don't see how adding more congestion to that area is good for anyone in the town. I agree that we need to cut carbon emissions. I would love that my area was more walkable. I would love that my area was more walkable, but it's not. If you want to try to walk to the trolley, you have to cross the on-ramp two times and walk down Granite Ave. And then take the bike path. I agree that there are areas of town that do need to be rezoned and we need to add more housing to those. I just don't see the Granite Ave. parcel being part of that equation. I think that it just feels very different than all the other proposals made tonight. And I think that it will have an unfair burden put on our area of town. I also have a question about the parking maximum. There's no limit of how many cars those apartments can have. So where are the extra cars going? They're probably going to be parked on my street, which is something that needs to be considered. And I understand that zoning is different than building, but it just feels like if someone's going to build, that's going to be the first place that it gets built. So I just wanted to voice my concerns.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
We have Colleen McCarthy on the Zoom. Colleen, if you could unmute and give your name and address.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Awesome. Thanks. Hi, Colleen McCarthy, Town Meeting Member, Precinct 4. I live at 108 Gulliver Street. I actually just, you know, not less of a comment, but more questions that I'm genuinely interested in hearing the answer to as I think about this and wanting to understand. So, you know, one of the things that we're hearing, I think most, most all of us in Milton would agree that we need, you know, housing for teachers, police officers, affordable housing, income-restricted, you know, developments. Is there anything in this law that says that we need to offer that? And the reason I ask is, you know, leaving this open-ended is a serious concern. If you look at the Hendry's condos, 11 of those units are not bought. They're not sold. There's, you know, $700,000 for a one-bedroom apartment. And I'm just wondering if the law, you know, has that, you know, anything built in the law that would allow those people, you know, to purchase homes that need it? That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen.
Sorry, Kathleen O'Donnell. And then after that, Katie Conlin, Jen, and Matt Zahler.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm Kathleen O'Donnell. I'm a Town Meeting Member from Precinct 7, and I live at 12 Belcher Circle. I'd like to thank the board for carrying out its obligations to hold a public hearing on this particular zoning. I know it's not one of your favorite articles that's going forward, but the purpose, and I'd remind everybody here, is to just hold the public hearing, to hear members of the public, which you are today. And then you would be doing a report, which could be a recommendation or a report up or down. But that's all you need to do. It's not, you're not voting at this point to say, oh, yes, I want this zoning or not. And so I just would remind it, it's just a report and a recommendation. And that you, as Town Meeting Members, if you are, would be able to, Town Meeting, vote individually, like everybody else, in favor or not of this proposed zoning. I would encourage people to think about this zoning as providing opportunities. It's not a requirement. Unlike a 40B where somebody comes in and says, I want waivers of everything you've got in town to build my particular project. That's not the way this works. It's zoning, the design standards that Cheryl Taguas has put into the Select Board's draft have been very helpful. As a matter of fact, they've included provisions that we should have had all along, like floor area ratios and open space requirements and all that sort of thing. So it's zoning that's providing us an opportunity. And I know that people are thinking, oh, my God, you know, Granite Ave. is going to have five, you know, buildings that are going to be 17,000 feet tall. But actually, that was just a proposed drawing. It wasn't the actual project. There's a difference between actually applying for something and providing the opportunity. And as I said, this is just providing the opportunity. And lastly, I would just sort of like to say that when I moved to this town ages ago, it was a first-time homebuyer. And I bought a two-family because it was affordable. Milton was affordable. It provided an opportunity in that particular real estate crisis, which was, you know, a century ago. It was a big rush and I got thrown out of my house. And I was renting because of the landlord sold. And I was running around trying to find someplace to build, someplace to buy. And Milton was affordable. And that's no longer the case. It's not affordable for young families. It's not affordable for people in my age group. There's nothing for me to downsize to. And so I think it's wonderful. When we were talking about the accessory dwelling units, we heard a lot of times about the fact that, you know, it's ruining the town. We're providing some kind of multifamily housing that everybody moved away from. The social mobility that this town provided for, you know, my generation and generations before us is no longer available. You can't buy a house here as a young family and have the wealth creation that the rest of us have had the advantages of. And I think it's important to provide that opportunity through this zoning, and I ask for people's support. Thank you.
Katie?
We have Kat on the Zoom. Kat, if you could unmute and give your name and address.
Hi. Give me one second here. All right. Hi, my name is Kat Gonzo, and I live at 136 Elliott. And I've been following this debate closely. And I'm here to say that I'm supportive of the zoning law. Many people throughout these debates have stated that they want to maintain the neighborhood's character. And yes, I agree that green spaces, lovely buildings, nice homes and aesthetics are important. But I also deeply care about the people of this community and our neighbors. Passing this law will not only make Milton more diverse, equitable and inclusive, but it will foster community and belonging. I model these values in my everyday actions for my six-year-old daughter who attends the Glover. And I hope that the leaders of this community can set an example of a human-first philosophy for the children and young adults of Milton by doing what's right and passing the zoning law. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Kat.
Katie Conlin. And then after Katie, Jen from Fairmount Ave., Matt Zahler, Kristin Joyce, Janet Ferrone.
Great, welcome.
Evening, members of the Planning Board and the Select Board who are here. I want to thank, first of all, Katie Conlin, 42 Reed Steel Road, and a Town Meeting Member from Precinct 3. I want to thank the planning staff for that wonderful presentation this evening. I've watched all of the Select Board and Planning Board meetings on this topic. And every time I see the Planning Board's presentations at the monthly forums, it just gets more and more informative and better. And I think there was a lot more detail that, especially the issue that was presented tonight about the net number of units in various districts. I think that should give a lot of residents, who are concerned legitimately about the number of 2461 is the total zoned number. I think that should give a little more comfort to some of our residents. I wanted to, I'm going to, there's a lot of people in the overflow room who are waiting to speak. And I'm just going to shorten my remarks and just offer a couple of comments. And I have two questions I want to ask the Planning Board. I thank the boards for writing to the state agencies about our classification. I think that was the right thing to do. And we've gotten an answer back that the state disagrees with Milton's position as to our classification. I'm also mindful of the fact that Town Council has advised that courts give substantial deference to rulemaking by administrative agencies. I believe that's the correct advice from Town Council. And I heard them advise at one of your meetings in September that Milton should do our best to comply with state law, including the HLC guidelines by December 31st. I think that's what's in Milton's best interest, which is what I usually try to be guided by. And I think that's what we should try to do. And to that end, we're less than six weeks to go before a town meeting. We're about a week and a half out from the printer deadline. I urge the Planning Board, the Select Board, and the Warrant Committee to ensure that the zoning articles and the recommendation of the Warrant Committee give Town Meeting Members the best possible options for Milton in December, both the language of the bylaw and the boundaries of the sub-districts. So I appreciate the fact that you're trying to take as much advantage as possible of the existing multifamily that exists in town. And to that point, you know, I share the concerns that many of you have raised about Granite Ave. South District. 530 units is a large number for that area. I know there's concern in the Elliott Street Corridor about that number as well. And for Granite Ave., anybody who drives Granite Ave. in the morning to get onto the expressway knows how bad the traffic congestion is. There are residents on Cortland Circle and Thistle Avenue who have a hard time just getting out of their neighborhoods. So I want to ask two questions. The Select Board was just fine-tuning the articles two nights ago. And I think it's worth asking about Brush Hill Road, which was taken off the sub-district list. And that would be Fuller Village. And I think it included the healthcare facility site as well. I could be wrong, but... And then the second question I have, so I want to know whether they should be reconsidered. And then the second question is, at your October 5th meeting, the Chair of the Planning Board asked that you, Teal, take a look at Chrisid Brook and Winter Valley. And my question is, have they been considered as sub-districts? As you know, the Town Farm with 3.5 buildable acres is adjacent to Chrisid Brook. The Select Board, acting as Governor Stotan trustees, has discussed with the AG's office the possibility of building multifamily affordable housing on the Town Farm. So my question is, does it make sense to consider a sub-district at that location with Chrisid Brook? And that's a question that you may want to consider as the warrant goes to print. I raise it now because, as we all know, once the warrant is in print, that defines the scope that Town Meeting can consider. And if there's a reason to include them, I suggest that you try to get them into the warrant so that Town Meeting has the most options possible. And if they're not included in the warrant, then in all likelihood, Town Meeting won't be able to consider them in December because of the scope of the article. So if it's too late for you to consider them at this stage, then assuming zoning is passed in December, I think it's something that the Planning Board should take up at a later date. But I hope you'll consider those questions and possibly help disperse some of the impact on some of these districts even more broadly than you already have. So thank you very much.
Excellent, Katie. Thank you.
So Jen, I apologize.
Hello, I'm Jen Erby Leggett, 312 Fairmount Ave. Yes, it's a little hard to pronounce. I come before you in full support of complying with the law. Tim, thank you so much for that incredibly thoughtful zoning plan and responsible zoning plan. I really would urge you not to waste any more money in potential legal fees to fighting this law, which is essentially asking us to do our fair share to address the housing crisis in the state. Also, an employer, I'm having a really hard time hiring anyone that lives within a commutable distance of Rosendale, where my business is. People are living in Rhode Island at this point. The Globe article was incredibly embarrassing. Brought up our NIMBY behavior of saying, we don't want to comply with this. Brought up what I still consider to be an incredibly painful part of our history when we took the town, the poor farm, and built luxury homes on it. This is not a responsible way to create development and create more housing in Milton. And again, I just don't think that it's us doing our fair share. So I really urge you to comply with this law, and thanks for all your time.
Great, thank you. A few more, and then maybe we can open it up to questions. Tim, what do we have?
Matt Zahler is next on the list. And then we've got Kristin Joyce, Janet Ferrone, Mark Cristo, Nora Harrington, Ron Chikini, and Carolyn Cahill. That's six or seven more on the list.
All right.
Good evening, everybody. How you doing? Tim, good to see you. My name is Matt Zahler, 313 Elliott Street. I am a mixed-income housing developer. So I have direct experience with what we're talking about today and have been talking about. And I am for compliance with the law. Firstly, I want to just raise something. It was disappointing to hear that the board and others were trying to make the case that the Matapan High Speed Line is not rapid transit. It connects to one of the most underserved communities in the city of Boston and runs right through our backyard. So that was not something that I think was the right thing to do. I'm glad to see that HLC came down the way they did on that. So, but moreover, and more importantly, I think it was a waste of time that we could have spent better planning for what we need to do here. Before I talk about that, though, I'd want to make the point that economics are the key driver to any real estate decision that a developer makes. And so if the fundamentals aren't correct and they're doing their math as they should, then they will not move forward with a project that isn't feasible. And so as Tim has pointed out, there's a large number of units that are planned for, but only so many will be feasible. So keep that in mind when people are thinking about how this will play out in the community. And then the other point I want to make is that, you know, this board has an opportunity to really help shape the next steps here. And, you know, it's your role and responsibility. And I appreciate it takes a lot of time and effort, and this is volunteer. But you can kind of give us the guidance that we need in our community to shape these parcels and design guidelines and things that will help folks do the right thing when they're redeveloping and adding density here. You know, I think if you could focus on that, that would be an asset and a benefit to our community. So thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Matt.
We have a Zoom hand raise for Dr. Vanessa Calderon Rosado. If you could unmute and give your name and address.
Good evening. I'm Vanessa Calderon Rosado, and I live at 66 Russell Wood Road. First off, I want to thank the Planning Board members, Tim, for your great presentation, and everyone else involved in the process, as well as the neighbors here tonight. I want to go on record in support of the MBTA Communities Law. The MBTA Communities Law is the law, a constitutional law of the Commonwealth. And our town has the responsibility to comply with the law first and foremost. Second, this is our chance to create opportunities for families of various sizes, socioeconomic status, stages in life, to be welcomed into our wonderful community. Many of us, like myself, have been longtime residents of Milton, and as such, many of us were able to afford Milton Den. That's not true anymore. And it is our responsibility to make sure that we create opportunities for mixed-income homes so we can afford to live in Milton. People, our teachers, our firefighters, and people who work in the service industry. Third, creating these zoning changes in compliance with the law, it will promote public transit law. Tonight, we have heard a lot about traffic concerns around town. But we all know that many of these issues around traffic in Milton are created by people cutting through our town to commute in the morning and in the evening. By creating zoning laws, zoning districts that comply with the law, public transportation will be used more. Lastly, as a housing developer in Boston, I think this is a great opportunity for people like me to work with neighbors, with districts, with communities within Milton to create housing that promotes and continues to enhance the character of our town while creating opportunities to welcome more people in our town. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have Kristin Joyce.
Hi, I'm Kristin Joyce, 42 Cortland Circle. So I have a list of things I wanted to say tonight, but a lot of my neighbors and other people have already said. So I know your time is valuable. So I don't want to repeat the traffic issues, the headaches there, the fact that our neighborhood is not accessible to the T. There is no way to get to the T from my, from our neighborhood. All you're going to do is add a bunch of cars that don't fit.
You know what? Can you speak into the microphone?
Sure.
People can't hear you. That was...
I need a booster.
Yeah, you can bend it down a little bit there. Good.
So we don't have amenities in our neighborhood. We, when we need, we want coffee, we have to get in the car and go to the square. When we need milk, we have to go, get in our car and go to the square. We don't have access to anything but our little neighborhood. Adding a huge development like this is only going to complicate things. I agree with the person earlier that said this is not good for the environment. It's going to just add a ton of cars. And I really don't understand why we're not looking. If we can't build enough within the half-mile radius, because we don't have the land or whatever else, why aren't we looking further out where there's more land? And there's actually a... And there's actually a bus route that runs down the middle of town. We don't have the T. We don't have amenities. Other places in town do. And thank you all. I know you're watching.
Thank you so much, Kristin. Appreciate it.
We have Janet Ferrone.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, my name. Is that good with the mic? Okay. My name is Janet Ferrone, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Two in the Elliott Street corridor, and surprisingly, Milton resident who rides the T right to Central Ave to my house. I'm in full support of this act. And I moved to Milton about 20 years ago, which I know makes me a newcomer in some folks' eyes. But what I've really noticed is that there's a small group of folks that when anything is proposed, development wise, change wise, really kind of incites a panic and gets folks really riled up without looking at these amazing presentations that we have that give the facts. So I really want to caution folks and encourage everyone to really look at it and not just believe, you know, what's in a Facebook group or all this hype around it. So what I want to say is, I lived diagonally across from 36 Central, and I saw that when that came up. People were panicking. It was going to ruin the neighborhood. Had a woman collecting signatures, petitions. They built it. There was compromise. It's in the neighborhood. Everyone loves it. The woman who started the petition drive tried to move in there. Like, I just think folks get, you know, just wild about, you know, anything changing. So I, the other points I want to make, we had a similar situation a little out on Maple, but I won't go into that. I'm a senior. I'm looking to downsize at some point. The idea of having this variability in housing, there's such a need. We see in, again, if you're in the Facebook groups, people desperate to have a small apartment. Their daughter wants to live here. Their, you know, mother-in-law, whoever. And I'm really looking forward to having that option and affordable options for, you know, seniors or, you know, folks coming up. The other thing is that people are stressing it's a zoning act. It's not, we're going to build this act. And I want to stress that it's the total units. Again, if you followed the presentation, we're not adding all this. I mean, in my area, there's 480 zoned, and that means 70 new units. So I really hope people keep that in mind and not the huge numbers. Also, I'm really surprised at suggestions that we skirt the law illegally. I'm an elected official, goes against my oath and my morals, and it puts Milton really at risk of losing millions in grant funding as well as incurring tremendous legal fees. So for those and other reasons, this is why I fully support this act.
Thank you.
Mark Cristo.
Hi, good evening. Mark Cristo, 17 Waldo Road, a street that's well represented tonight. I want to thank the planning board, the town planners, everybody who's been involved, select board as well. This has been a quite a challenging process. I've tried to give this a lot of thought, usually do before I speak. And I have always felt, though, however, that the Mattapan Trolley is not rapid transit. And I've always pointed to both the past, the current usage, and the future projections. And when I think of that, I know, having grown up in this town, that there was an attempt back in the late 60s to convert it to rapid transit. It didn't go forward. And I know that nothing much has changed since then, except for the redesigned Ashmont Station, which is a little bit more of a cumbersome transfer. But I do know that in riding the T, the subway, the trolley, I should say, that, and I don't, I don't utilize it as much as I did years back. But it's a different experience. It does only get you to Ashmont. And Ashmont, we know, is the terminus of the Red Lines Ashmont branch. And we sit beyond that. So knowing the size of the trolley, its limited capacity, the fact that you have to transfer, it's required, it's not a transfer by choice, and it doesn't get you downtown, shows that it is distinctly dissimilar. And if we do try to build out at the same percentages as rapid transit communities, the infrastructure of the M B T A is going to be challenged, I'd say. Another point that I, that I try to present as well is that when the M B T A had their renovation forum back in June, and they discussed it, you know, their 15% planned capacity at this point. They've got some funding in place. However, it was said that it would not incorporate the trolley into rapid transit. And that would only be done if, in fact, the terminus is pushed out from Ashmont out to Mattapan. So for those reasons, I feel that we have a agenda that's based upon a faulty premise that is overly aggressive. And I want to make a distinction, too, with my questioning a classification. I am not questioning compliance. Compliance is something different. I am for compliance. I am for development. I'd like to see more housing. In fact, I'd like to see Milton Village expanded some in terms of the footprint. I'd like to see the Verizon Building included. I know last week, when I spoke here with you and you all and Cheryl, I think we talked about needing to have at least five acres for a sub district. And with the addition of the F A King Building next door to it, and in looking at the modeling that you presented with the two bridges for the trolley off of Elliott Street there to connect, and seeing that the parking lot for the, the M B T A parking lot is utilized to combine the 88 Warf Street, I don't know how we can't somehow incorporate parcelization that's connected to improve the, at least the landscape to build a little bit more there so that we're not overwhelming the residential neighborhoods. And I would think that, you know, to follow up on what Katie Conlin said, looking for other sub districts. I think that's a good idea. You know, in driving around town, I was thinking, and I'm not looking to drive any entities out of town, but at some point, St. Mary of the Hills, if that were to cease operation, it's a seven acre parcel that's less than a half a mile from the Cape and Street T stop. It's on a major boulevard on a bus line. Possibility as well, too. So I think there are things that we need to think about related to that. And just looking at the dynamics of some of the dimensional issues that you had brought up at the last couple of meetings, I noticed that the F A R now has increased in the Elliott Corridor and Blue Hill Parkway from 0.7. And I believe, Tim, you said it's due to you T L suggestion from 0.5. That's a 40% increase from where it was before. And when I look at the numbers, I was trying to do tabulations upstairs. And you look at, say, a 10,000 square foot lot, because the parameters are 7,500 and above. A 10,000 square foot lot at a 0.7 F A R would yield a 7,000 square foot building. 7,000 divided by three units is a substantial. It's a, what's that? 20 something, 2,500, a little bit less than 2,500 square foot per unit. Most of the houses in the neighborhood that would be considered would not be any bigger than that. If you look at their F A Rs, and, you know, they're about the 0.2 range. So you're increasing the sizing and the massing of structures. It's a developer's dream to think that they might be able to find an opportunity to build if we have numbers that high. And I know that in discussions last week, I believe it was talked about maybe having a redated F A R. And I think that's a really good idea because we want to encourage affordable housing. We don't want to build this mass housing that's going to be out of character with the neighborhood. And we don't want developers to come in and just look at the bottom line and say, wow, at a 0.7 on a, on a 20,000 square foot lot, I could build a structure that's 14,000, knowing that that yields 3,4600 square foot units. That's not what this is about. So we still have to look at some of the parameters and some of the numbers that are out there.
Mark, I think we're minutes. So, okay, that's.
I've hit the few points that I wanted.
That's excellent. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
We've got Nora Harrington next.
Welcome. Hi, everyone. Nora Harrington. I live on 5 Columbine Road, and I'm a Town Meeting Member in Precinct Two. First of all, I do want to thank Tim, all the consultants that worked with him on creating the proposal, the planning board for their considerations, and of course, the Select Board as well for putting this forward. I am in favor of the proposal as it's currently drafted. As we've all seen, there are a number of factors and parameters that went into trying to craft this proposal. You know, you have to get to a goal number while also dealing with all of the constrictions that the, the law requires as far as lot size, the sub district size, et cetera. I'm really gratified by the dimensional and design standards that were created. And I'm grateful that, especially in the residential neighborhoods, that it will create multifamily housing that looks like one and two family housing. I mean, a two and a half story house is what we have right now in the Elliott Street corridor on Blue Hills Parkway. So, you know, just from a visual standpoint, it's not going to look any different. And I'm also really glad that F A R is even added in to this proposal. I lived in Dorchester for many years. I was on the Board of Lower Mill Civic Association, where we reviewed development proposals all the time. And F A R was an issue. And I was shocked when I moved to Milton that it's not in our zoning. So we're getting these massive houses, McMansions, on small lots, and it looks crazy. So this zoning actually protects us. This is better in many ways than our current zoning. And for those, you know, I know folks who live in East Milton and in Granite Ave area are concerned. But from my perspective, and a developer could go in now and acquire one of those properties if it were possible. And without any zoning, they could do a 40B, which has no rules around it, right? So it could have a much higher F A R. They could build, they don't have to leave much green space. They could have way more paved area. So if that can already happen now, that is the risk that the folks in East Milton and Granite Ave are subject to now. This actually provides better restrictions as far as, you know, the size of a building, the density, the open space, et cetera. So why wouldn't we go with the common sense of, you know, adopting something that is actually going to protect us? And I think that's the switch that I made in my mind, and I ask people to consider, does this zoning actually protect us more than what we currently have? You know, and again, it's just zoning. Who knows what's going to happen next? You know, the town may find a way to build its own housing in one of these parcels and meet some of our affordable housing goals. But I see this act, you know, we need more housing in the Boston area. It's clear from an economic standpoint, from a human standpoint. And I see this act as really protecting us more than harming us. So I want to thank you for all your time and certainly for your consideration.
Thank you.
We have Ron Chikini next.
Welcome.
Hello. Evening, planning board. Tim and Josh. So since I last wrote and spoke about the bottom line, I've added a few more things to my list, and my bottom line keeps getting bigger. So I had to create a new bottom line.
Could you just state your address for the.
Sorry, Ron Chikini, 26 Cushion Road. Sorry about that. And really, the bottom line tonight is about this deadline that we're under and what our options are. Some things have already been, you know, mentioned tonight, but I thought I would just recap it. As was mentioned, currently only 12 of the 177 M B T A communities have the 2023 deadline. Milton is one of those 12, obviously. The remaining 165 municipalities have some, they've barely begun to look at it as a whole. Some of them have looked at it extensively. I don't know exactly how many have looked at it to the depth that Milton has. I would guess probably not many have looked at it the way you guys have. We are the canary in the coal mine, and I believe that a lot of people are looking to see what we're going to do. Town Council made it very clear at this Monday's Warrant Committee meeting that there is, in fact, a distinction between guidelines and regulations. And that guidelines, as we know, do not carry the weight of enforceable law. He added that the guidelines are, in his words, "open to interpretation." He also added that he felt it was, in his words, "likely" that the state would come down on the side of H L C if there was a lawsuit. But that does not change the fact that these guidelines are not enforceable law as some would have us believe. In my opinion, these guidelines should be challenged. And by this time next year, when the remaining 165 towns and cities have been forced to join us, I predict that there will be dozens and dozens of lawsuits challenging, doing just that and challenging the state. Advocates of full compliance refer to the financial burden of lawsuits as if the incalculable financial burden of full compliance doesn't matter. I mean, somehow that just doesn't factor into it. Advocates of full compliance also urge unquestioning full compliance to the guidelines simply because someone called it the law. Well, Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 81B, very clearly and disputably grants authority only to you, the planning board, to create zoning bylaws. So if people want to follow the law, indeed, let's follow the law. Town Planner, Mr. Zawinski, recently confirmed that the cost of noncompliance is $35,000 a year. Mr. Zawinski was also quoted in the March 2, 2023 Milton Times, saying, and I couldn't agree more, "I think it's more important that we get it right than get it done by the deadline." Getting it right absolutely means not complying with the M B T A Communities Act at this time. Take the $35,000 hit, literally buy yourself more time to get it right. As Milton's elected officials, you have a fiduciary responsibility to the people of Milton, not the people who want to live in Milton. Finally, with the 250th anniversary of the Boston Tea Party, just 50 days away, and given the special role Milton and the Suffolk Resolves played in the American Revolution, it is worth noting that not all laws, if indeed they even are laws, are necessarily good and just laws that need to be blindly obeyed. Thank you.
We have Tom Callahan on Zoom. Tom, if you could unmute and give your name and address.
Thank you. My name is Tom Callahan, Precinct Four, Town Meeting Member. Not going to add much to the proponents. I am in favor of a yes vote on Articles One and Two. And I want to thank, add my thanks to Tim and Josh for their extraordinary work to get us to this point where we are a few weeks away from potentially adopting the M B T A Communities Act for the town of Milton. Thank the planning board for their work and specifically the Select Board for ensuring that Town Meeting will have something to vote on. I just wanted to point out, I've been, I spent my 40-year career, much of it in the affordable housing nonprofit space. And one of the through lines, maybe one of the only through lines for people who have testified tonight and over the last many weeks that are both for and against adopting this bylaw is affordable housing. I heard a number of folks that anticipate, are anticipating voting no, who are concerned about the fact that this doesn't create enough affordable housing. And as an affordable housing advocate for my entire career, I'm sensitive to that. This is largely a market rate production legislation. We do need more housing of all types at all price levels to ease the housing crisis that we have in this region. But I want to thank the Select Board and the Town Planning staff for adopting the maximum we can do right now, which is 10%. And I noted that Tim Zawinski, in his presentation, talked about the path to potentially go above 10% as well. After this is passed, we can do a feasibility study and potentially require of developers 12 or 15 or even up to 20% affordable housing. That's a number that has been reached by City of Cambridge, City of Boston. So I think there's room for us to go above the 10%. So I think that's a win. We're going to create more diverse housing type. We're going to create more affordable housing. We're going to be a welcoming community, and I urge a yes vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom.
We've got Carolyn Cahill next.
Hi, welcome. Hopefully, I'm the last speaker. I don't know if anyone else is on Zoom, but I want to say, first of all, I love Milton and so do so many other people. And that's why we have so many people here tonight, which I think is pretty fantastic and speaks a lot to our town. I think it's important to listen to all of the concerns so we can make this zoning palatable for all. With that being said, I'm here today to say I support the MBTA zoning. I want to commend Tim, and let's not forget Josh. I also want to thank the Select Board and Planning Board for the endless time that has gone into this. We have a serious housing shortage, not only in Milton, but all towns surrounding greater Boston. This is a very complex zoning change with a lot of layers. I want to emphasize a few points, though, that continue to be misinterpreted. One is, no homeowner is going to be forced out of their home. If they are in one of the zoning districts and choose to sell and go through the typical process, a potential developer is able to bid on that property along with anyone else who is interested. That property very easily could remain a single-family home. Once I started learning more about this MBTA zoning, I realized that we have the right to control height, setbacks, lot coverage between districts. The Elliott Street Corridor has been mentioned a couple times, predominantly single-family homes. This district, if passed, would be zoned so that compliant lots or parcels must be on 7,500 square feet or more. As a reference, the majority of houses on Allen Circle are on lots that are too small to be developed into three units. Development cannot happen on these lots. This was the town's way of addressing not having extreme density issues. I also think it's important to know that if a developer were to purchase one of these homes, there's a height restriction. That property cannot be built more than two and a half stories high. So there will not be three-decker homes on these properties. Think of it as a two-family that has a walk-up third-floor attic. Essentially, that's going to be finished. That's not a lot of space to work with. The three units must also be attached, so you cannot convert a garage into a third unit. This zoning criteria alone makes it very difficult for the numbers to work for a developer. What we heard tonight is our Planning Board has the power to create design standards and guidelines under this zoning bill. So for example, they can set the guideline that there can be no parking in front of the property. They can set guidelines, no exterior staircases, and so on. My hope is the Planning Board will continue to spend time on these design standards and guidelines to help ensure that the character of Milton is not drastically changed. This zoning change is not creating 2,461 units, which continues to be the number that is tossed around. Because we already have single-family and two-family homes on these parcels, that already counts as one or two, respectively. So to meet the three-unit requirement, you would then be adding one, if it's a two-family, or two units, if it's a single-family, to each parcel, which brings us to three. So currently, we have 700 units in place, meaning if every single parcel was developed, we would be adding 1,761 units. This article is creating housing at different price points. What it is doing is giving more housing options than just single-family homes. Typically, a two-bed, one-bath condo in Milton sells around $550,000 to $700,000. First, your average sales price of a single-family home, which is currently selling for 1.1 million. I hope our town does comply with this state mandate zoning change. I see a real need for housing options in all shapes and sizes, not just 1.6 million and higher. Let's create housing that future generations of Milton residents can call home. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
We have one final hand left on, or potentially final hand on Zoom.
We'll end at 10.
Give your name and address. And be sure to unmute yourself.
Diane DiTulio Agostino on 147 Ridgewood Road, and I am a town, oh, it is unmuted.
Yep, we can hear you. Welcome.
Diane DiTulio Agostino on 147 Ridgewood Road.
Diane.
Town.
That's good. We can hear you now.
Can you hear me? Okay, I'm a town, I hope I didn't lose seconds there. I'm a Town Meeting Member as well as a former Warrant Committee Member. And I know what it is. I couldn't hear you on the Zoom, so I had to use the TV. I am a former Warrant Committee Member as well as a former Selectman, and I currently serve on the Commission on Disability. I have a number of questions that I'm going to go through, and I would appreciate after the hearing if the four members of the Planning Board or the Chair themselves provide whatever answers they can provide, but they do take the time to get the answers to these very important questions. This evening's presentation was, you know, very well put together, but some of the things I learned due to this new attempt to have a zoning law changed by the state legislature instead of by the town's Planning Board is that the town has what's called the Town Planner and Development Department. So there have been monthly meetings. However, the meetings that I've been attending with the Planning Board and the Warrant Committee or watching them did not portray the information. So I'm very concerned. I can understand how some people feel this is what we want because this is what we heard. So here's the questions I have before us. Has the Planning Board received all the facts they need? The financial facts, the providing services facts, and the traffic impact facts for them to even begin to create a report on this new zoning? I'm very concerned that the facts that you've requested from the consultants have not been provided to you. Number two, has the Planning Board received the answers, the responses to the Rockport lawsuit? I listened to Town Council for almost an hour the other night to the Warrant Committee, and he talked about, you know, the potential for a lawsuit. There is a lawsuit filed by Rockport residents, and for every lawyer, they can, or every resident, you can pull it right up online. And it actually also includes, as a defendant, the Attorney General, which were referred to an Attorney General memo. There's only a $35,000 grant that Milton's received in the last several years, so the concern for lost money is not high on the list. The answers that we need are the Massachusetts Constitution gives the town its own zoning autonomy. And that's what this Rockport Superior Court case states. It also shows that the home rule petition of the fact that we have a two-thirds vote generally for zoning, but that this legislation wants to reduce it to just a simple majority is very questionable. And thirdly, that the new law changes the voting threshold, which is what I just mentioned to you. It was the home rule petition that was the strongest form of home rule, that it is up to each individual town. And all of the complaints, complaint items need to be answered. We need, I know you can't give me those answers tonight, but we need the answers. It's only 12 little towns, 12 little towns that have a December 31 deadline. The August notes of the guidelines only came out in August, and yet we're being forced to rush this through when the Planning Board, I have all the respect in the world for the pressure you are under. I've certainly been there when the Corey Hills deal was pushed through the town of Milton. So I understand the pressure, and I really respect the fact that you've stood up to that pressure. What will the penalty, this is the next question, is what will the penalty be for Milton to violate the American with Disabilities Act? This law is to create housing within half a mile of four MBTA trolley stations that are not handicap accessible. Not one of them is safely handicap accessible. We also always hear about green space. Green space is not just green to look at it. It's what purifies our air. We live under the airport and all those planes coming through. Where is the concern that we very well manage what green space we have? And then the most important question of all, what will the repercussions be if Town Meeting passes the Select Board? I should have said this in the beginning. This isn't the Planning Board's article that's been presented, although I think the word "our plan" was used. What would the repercussions be if Town Meeting passes the Select Board article on December 4th and the Superior Court confirms the Rockport lawsuit that Mass General Law 48, 48, Section 3A oversteps its authority and is illegal? It is not a tried and true law. The American with Disabilities Act is a tried and true law.
Diane? Diane, sorry, we're at the three-minute mark. I'm sorry. Can we, we need to conclude. Can you hear me?
I muted her.
Okay. So she may be still talking, so. Diane, I'm sorry, we're, our time is, your time.
I just, my last thing was that.
I know, you know what? It's exceeded. I haven't let other people.
Disabilities do not discriminate. So this is nothing to do with discrimination. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, great. Thank you. And I think that should be it for attendees. Thank you very much, and thank you all. I think this has been a really good, you know, hearing all of these wonderful comments. We'd like to now sort of address some of the questions that were asked. If we want to start with, I think one of the first questions, Tim, you were probably taking notes as well. All right, if you want to start, and then I'll fill in if there's anything that looks like was missed.
Yeah, so we got a question relatively early on, asking about kind of specific questions about design and kind of the look and feel of buildings. The bylaw as it stands right now has a provision that allows the Planning Board to adopt design guidelines in the future. One of the tricky things about byright zoning is that the guidelines and the standards that you produce need to be objective, for lack of a better term. So it's got to be something that you look at and you see, there's no judgment involved in saying like, I meet this criteria or I don't. So they're a little bit trickier than guidelines that you can produce for a special permit zoning. But we do, we have reserved the right to produce design guidelines, and there are a number of development standards in the zoning that give the Planning Board a little bit of kind of space to work with in terms of the look and feel of buildings. Cheryl, I don't know if you wanted to chime in on that. I know you put a little work into those.
I think that's well done, Tim. Thank you.
There were a number, there are a number of questions and comments about Granite Ave and the Granite Ave Parcels over there. And I wanted to kind of take the opportunity to talk a little bit more about what I think is like the relatively unique positioning of those Granite Ave Parcels relative to how the compliance model treats them versus how development would actually occur on those parcels. I think, you know, there's significant density that's being proposed on Granite Ave. I think one of the things that you kind of have to understand is that we don't have, these are the parcels we have that are relatively underdeveloped and that are kind of the types of industrial or kind of commercial uses that you see a lot more in Dedham and Randolph and Rockland, where these are towns that are starting to produce zoning, where they're just rezoning enormous pieces of parking lots, and they're like calling it a day. We don't have a lot of that. Granite Ave is kind of where it is. That being said, I think we've always been very sensitive to the fact that there is a neighborhood over there, that there are conditions that are very sensitive. And I think the sensitivity of those conditions creates a kind of unique sort of circumstances. I mentioned in the presentation that the floodplain bylaw applies to everything. The floodplain bylaw is an overlay zone that basically says if you, it takes the FEMA flood insurance rate maps and puts that on top of our zoning map and says anywhere in a flood zone, these are special regulations that apply to developments here. And a lot of it is just, you know, sort of identifying, you know, where the floodplain is. But there are additional requirements that all projects in a floodplain need to follow. And one of them is, every project is subject to the Wetlands Protection Act irrespective of whether they're actually wetlands on the site. So they have to go through Conservation Commission. They have to follow all the rules in the Wetlands Protections Regulations from DEP. And they're also subject to all of the sections of the Massachusetts State Building Code about building in flood zones, which require elevation, which requires enforcement of infrastructure and upgrades of water and sanitary sewer facilities in these projects. And so this is something that when you plug our dimensional parameters into the compliance model, it spits out, you know, okay, you've got this parcel with these parameters, it's this many units. It doesn't take into account the fact that development on these sites is actually going to be very tricky. Frankly, if not impossible. You know, people build in the flood zone all the time, but it's a much trickier proposition. And, you know, we have created a zoning box that, okay, you can't go more than six stories at two Granite Ave, you can't go more than four and a half stories that, in the southern portion, and you also need to elevate your project, and you also need to make sure that all of your infrastructure is secure and all of these other flood regulations, to say nothing of the Wetlands Protection Act and those regulations. The other thing about the Granite Ave Parcels, and I'm speaking about the state TPW yard in the first place, is, and one of the commenters mentioned this, but it kind of even goes beyond just, you know, you can do a 40B anywhere in town. Local zoning doesn't apply to state property. You know, you might remember that after the last time the Granite Ave parcel was kind of floated for disposition, the state kind of pulled it back and, you know, there was a proposal for a sort of a Mast dot regional headquarters. We don't have zoning for Mast dot Regional Headquarters. That was just going to be a project they were going to build. So if the state is serious about building housing on state land, it doesn't matter what we zone. You know, they can do what they want to do. The thing about a state project is, we probably have more leverage in a state-sponsored project than we do in any other project being built under the zoning because we have elected representation in the State House. We have, you know, a state government that, you know, in the past has been interested in running community process and in building projects that, you know, obviously work for the state's priorities because it's the state's land, but are not going to cause the types of disruptions that, you know, just a 500-unit project on Granite Ave would cause. And I think the other relatively unique thing here is that you've got state land on a state road. So again, irrespective of whoever owns that land, they need a Mast dot access permit to put their traffic onto the state road on Granite Ave. So what you've got is, you know, the state needs to give itself the permit. And you may think like, okay, they'll do it. But more than any other place in town, this area has the most unique likelihood of there being actual traffic improvements tied to a proposed development project. Because everywhere else in town, you know, we're putting projects in places where there's already infrastructure and it's transit-oriented, and we're trying to do our best to get people on transit. But, you know, the town is on the hook for the impacts. This is a place where the state is actually going to wind up being on the hook for the impacts. And so, you know, we definitely understand that, you know, there's a lot of units sort of coming out of the model there, but I think there's a lot going on on Granite Ave that is going to wind up limiting the amount of development that actually happens. So that was a, that wasn't quite an answer to a question, but I just wanted to make sure I got that stuff in there. There was a question about the effect on our subsized housing inventory. So one of the reasons why, you know, we put the 10% affordability requirement is, you know, 10% keeps your head above water on 40B. You know, we've got to get to 10%. If you get to 10% and every project you build has 10% affordability, you're above water. We're underwater right now. Every unit helps. You know, that's why we want to pursue, you know, a higher ratio so that rather than just sort of keeping our head above water, we're actually getting ahead on 40B. You know, the other thing that I mentioned, though, is that, you know, currently, unless it's a 40B project, we have not been building affordable housing. And there is no affordable housing in a subdivision. There is no affordable housing in a lot split where you do an A and R and build a new house. So one of the things that multifamily housing byright does is it opens up development opportunities, not just for private developers, but for affordable developers, mission-based developers who may not have the capacity, the time, the money to go through a bruising kind of rezoning process or a 40B. But if you have byright zoning, all of a sudden, they're more competitive in terms of building projects with private developers. So, you know, more units means more year-round units. That's absolutely true. But we will be producing affordable units at a pace that we haven't yet. But the only way to get out from under 40B is to build affordable units. And so, you know, we're going to have to continue to kind of tackle that problem. The inclusionary component in the zoning is not going to be a solution to 40B. It's going to help. It's going to prevent us from falling deeper in the hole, but it's going to take concerted effort to get out from under 40B. There was a question about ADUs. There was a question about ADUs, and I don't know exactly the conversation about, you know, revisiting ADUs, but one thing I will say is that, under this zoning, you know, we talked about there's different types of ADUs, there's an attached ADU, which is inside your house, there's detached, it's in the carriage house or garage. You wouldn't be able to, you can't do a detached unit under this zoning. Multifamily building in a sort of single-family context, it's got to be three units in one building. One thing that, you know, we talked about all of the kind of barriers that you go through to go from one unit to three units in terms of construction style and fire code and everything. You know, some of the, you know, some of the folks that we've talked to on our consultant teams, and some of the other folks in the development community that we've talked to, have kind of speculated that, you know, getting to three units on one of these house lots is kind of tough, but getting to two units is a lot easier. So, what you may wind up seeing is not a lot of three-family construction, but a lot of people just using the zoning to add that second unit. So, it's, you know, it's not an ADU, but it's kind of, has an effect of an ADU. There was a question about parking maximums, and where will extra cars go? You know, parking is obviously, you know, a very sensitive issue, but I think there are, there are land use controls around parking, and then there are other policy controls around parking that we just need to take seriously. The parking maximum kind of prevents overparking. And one of the things that we see is, you know, there's conversations a lot about, well, no one rides the T on Cape and Street or Valley Road or whatever. All of those houses have onsite parking, all of those houses are populated by people that are driving cars. When you start to build new housing that has limited amounts of parking, those developments select for people, you're not going to bring five cars into a situation where you've only got one parking space and there's no overnight parking. So, this is something that the town is going to have to kind of address is, okay, we've set the land use control where we're, you know, on a project basis, we're not bringing the ability to park a lot of cars onsite. Now, we need to kind of belt and suspenders that with enforcement of our overnight, because where were the cars going to go? They shouldn't go on the street, because you can't park overnight on the street. Now, if we don't enforce that, then that becomes a problem. So, you know, when I say that there are land use controls and then there are other policy controls, that's really what I mean. You know, so, we shouldn't be seeing a situation where more cars than are able to be parked onsite are coming into the neighborhoods, because those cars should be getting tagged every night. And, you know, if there needs to be further penalties beyond that, then that's something that we need to kind of think about as a town. There was a question, and I have to apologize, because I don't know if I followed it entirely, about if there's anything in the law that says we need to offer housing to town employees or middle-income folks, and there was a reference to the units in the Hendry's project, you know, not selling as fast as they thought they would. And I guess what I'll say to that is, no, there isn't. You know, it's by right development on the private market, there's no kind of, you know, in an affordable housing context where there's a lottery, we can kind of have a local preference lottery, there's nothing like that here. You know, what I will say is, you know, this doesn't sound good for developers, but, you know, if they want to sell those units in Hendry's, they might need to lower the price, right? And that's good. You know, bad for the owner, and, you know, there'll have to be some sort of correction there. But I mean, this is what happens when you introduce supply where there's an intense demand. Sometimes the supply starts to catch up, or, you know, it could be another thing where maybe they were priced too high, and there's all sorts of vagaries to the market. But, I mean, that's something where, from a kind of provision of housing perspective, we want to see that. We want to see prices go down. So, I didn't quite, I think, grab the thrust of that question. Then there was a question from Katie Conlon regarding the Brushhill Road sub-district and any other sub-districts that we talked about, and I did want to bring this up, just about sort of considering some of these other, and this came up in some other comments about, you know, why are we not looking in other parts of town? And I think we've had this conversation here at the planning board a lot of times, and we've kind of gone back and forth. And I think the issue that we run into relative to testing out some of these large parcel sub-districts that are kind of outside of the transit area is, you know, the transit area kind of presents the best possible conditions for multifamily development, because there are decent-sized parcels, but they're not huge parcels. You know, when you get down to, I'll use Brushhill Road as an example, where we are in a kind of constant tug-of-war between unit count and overall density. And in order for your overall density to be at 15 units per acre or more, when you have such a big parcel, say down at Brushhill Road, either of the Fuller Village parcels, you know, or even, you know, the 1200 Brushhill Road parcel, the number of units that you need to put on those parcels to get to a density number that is not going to drag you below 15 units per acre becomes what I would consider to be intolerable. You know, we talked about there were, you know, when we were modeling Brushhill Road, there were 1,300 units at Fuller Village, which is a lot. And it also has implications, not just for sort of just the principle of, you know, do we want to have this many units on Brushhill Road? But also, the guidelines give us a requirement that 50% of our unit capacity has to be within the transit area. So, now if you have, you need to have 1,300 units of Brushhill Road to have a density that doesn't drag you down, but now you've got to have 1,300 units at least in the transit area, which we didn't have. We did have UTEAL take a look at Quissett Brook and at Winter Valley to sort of test those, those are existing multifamily. I still have some questions out to them based on the results that came in, which is why I haven't been able to present this, but the question did come up, and so I want to just kind of talk about what I have. You know, if you look at, this is Canton and Highland, so they tested, and so the principle behind this is, let's do something at Winter Valley, let's take advantage of existing multifamily and see if we can bring down, let's say, bring down Granite Ave. So, you know, the numbers that they put in, you know, kind of get us to a point where we're over the overall density, so we're at 16.7 overall density with all of our sub-districts. So, this includes, this doesn't take any sub-districts out, it just keeps all the sub-districts the same. If you were to zone for 654 units at Winter Valley, that would get us to a 16.7 overall density, so we've got room to work with there, and it would get us 3,200 units of overall unit capacity. So, again, room to work with there. So, that's what, so you do that, and you haven't touched Granite Ave. So, you could bring Granite Ave down, but again, you've got 650 units at Winter Valley, which is four, five times more than the 40B that is going up next door. So, that's a huge number of units on that site. Plus, because it's not in the transit area, and because you have so many units, now you've upset the balance of the percentage of units we have in the transit area. So, if you wanted to do that, you would need to crank up the units in the transit area, or crank down the units at Canton Ave and Highland at Winter Valley, which again, starts to get you again below that, because we haven't even touched Granite Ave yet, which is the whole point of everything. So, this is another situation where that's a big site, and in order to get to a density that works with your overall numbers, you're putting a huge number of units on. And it's a similar situation at Quissett Brook, except more. You know, so, if you were to put 800 units at Quissett Brook, again, 16.7 overall density, so there's room to work with. But you have now, again, upset the balance of the percentage of units in the transit area. So, these, you know, there's, there's something to work with here, but it also now just starts to now put a burden on another part of town that may be even less suited to deal with it than the problem that we're trying to solve. So, again, it's that push and pull between unit count, overall density, and then the percentage that's within or without the transit area that is really this sort of balancing test that like, you know, these sub-districts are really, really, really tight. And, you know, the way to solve for it is to, you know, kind of recreate what we're doing in the transit area, but at a much wider scale and probably at a higher density. Because when you start to get into these big, big parcels, you're putting huge numbers of units that are kind of upsetting the balance of all of the other thresholds. So, you know, that's kind of why we landed where we landed on these sub-districts. You know, not because we're trying to sort of unfairly burden one neighborhood over another, but there is an element of that, you know, because, you know, again, you're starting to put hundreds of units where there's no transit accessibility, no amenities, no hope for transit accessibility, no hope for amenities. You know, and so it's, it's just been a tough balancing test. There was a statement about, we had talked at the last planning board meeting about a potential tiered FAR system, you know, in the Elliott Street and Blue Hills Parkway corridor. You know, we had to, we wanted to put the FAR constraint in because it's just a further, you know, tool that we can use to kind of shape the shape of these projects. But the fact of the matter is, you know, especially in the Elliott Street corridor, where you do have, on a 7,500-foot lot, it's fine, but you start to get into these larger lots, 10,000, 12,000, 15,000 square foot, you know, it's not as much of a constraint as we want it to be. So, we did ask UTEAL to test a sort of a tiered system where you would have a point seven FAR on a 7,500-foot lot, a...
Point five-two.
Point five-two FAR on a 10,000-square-foot lot, and then a point, was it three-five?
Three-five.
Three-five on a 15,000-square-foot lot. What that would do is kind of say, this is the size of building that you can build in the Elliott Street corridor irrespective of lot size, so that you're not having these sort of huge monstrous sort of castles. So, they were able to test that, the way that the compliance model works, they had to kind of create a bunch of extra sheets, but they were able to do it. I mean, the good news is that that system works. We can get compliance with that system. So, that's something where we'll need to kind of figure out, you know, what the mechanism is for. So, that language was not in the language that the select board approved on Tuesday. We'll need to kind of get that language in there. But that's something that we will be able to do to address that concern.
Right.
So, that, I mean, I know Ms. Agostino had a bunch of questions at the end, I don't know if those were questions that I'm in a position to answer, but, Meredith, I don't know if you had anything else that you caught.
No, I think that was, I think other than Diane's, and we can get to hers. We are just, because just to, two of her questions, I can, we can say, we are still waiting for our fiscal analysis from RKG. We are expecting to get that next week, Tim, is that correct? Because when we talk about, you know...
Eric is going to, so he's out of state this week, he said he's going to pick the project back up next week. He said it shouldn't take him very long, whether that means end of week or the following.
It would be nice to get that to the warrant committee, so they can actually understand what are the cost benefit, you know, a cost-benefit analysis. I think it's really important for us to have for town meeting and for the warrant committee. We're also waiting on a build-out analysis, so it actually can be a visual for residents. We felt it was really important, and it's part of UTEAL's, our consultants' responsibility, is to demonstrate what this will, you know, in a 3D model, what this will look like to residents. So, if something does get built, you know, potentially, they'll say, okay, this is what we're, this is what we're looking at. And height, you know, they'll see height limits, setbacks, and so forth.
Can I just add something to that? We asked them to utilize the design standards and the design guidelines that we've just added to the zoning in doing that build-out analysis. So, it'll be a good test of those, of that language that we put in there.
Exactly.
Yeah, so, they've got a version of the Granite Ave sub-district. They're still kind of putting the finishing touches on that. We've got a meeting with them tomorrow to kind of talk about a timeline. We wanted to see, at the very least, the sort of the bigger multifamily districts, but we do want to see something from every sub-district. So, we're going to work out a timeline for that with them in our meeting tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Meredith?
Yep.
There was one other thing that I thought maybe Tim could address, this question of who has the authority to adopt zoning. My understanding is it's very clearly town meeting is the, has the authority to adopt zoning, and zoning articles can be submitted by individual property owners, by citizens petition, by the select board, by the planning board. What the planning board is responsible to do is to hold a public hearing and provide a report to town meeting on its recommendation. That's, I just want to be sure, because I've seen a lot of social media posts about this topic. So, is that correct, what I said, my understanding is, Tim, is that correct?
If you, I'm going to read Chapter 40A, the Zoning Act, Section 5, Adoption or Change of Zoning Ordinances or Bylaws Procedure. Zoning ordinances or bylaws may be adopted and from time to time changed by amendment, addition, or repeal, but only in the matter hereinafter provided. Adoption or change of zoning ordinance or bylaws may be initiated by the submission to the city council or board of selectmen of a proposed zoning ordinance or bylaw by a city council, a board of selectmen, a board of appeals, by an individual owning land to be affected by change or adoption by request of registered voters of a town pursuant to Section 10 of Chapter 39, by 10 registered voters in the city, by a planning board, by a regional planning agency, or by other methods provided by municipal charter. So, all of those bodies that were named, planning board, select board, board of appeals, 10 citizens, regional planning agency, are all bodies that can submit a zoning article to the select board, and then the select board has the obligation to send that within 14 days of receipt to the planning board for its review. And then the planning board's obligation is to hold a public hearing and make a recommendation to town meeting.
Thank you.
Make a recommendation to town meeting or file a report?
Give me a second. No vote to adopt any such proposed ordinance or bylaw or amendment thereto shall be taken until a report with recommendations by a planning board has been submitted to the town meeting or city council or 21 days after said hearing has elapsed of that submission of such report. So, we're both right, Jim. Report with recommendations.
All right.
Yes, please, yes.
Sorry, I asked, my comments, what was left for commercial zoning? I don't understand what remains of the town portion of them.
So, the commercial zones that we have, and I can bring up the zoning map just to show people, are the Central Ave Business District, the Milton Village Business District, the East Milton Business District, and the two Granite Ave Business Districts. So, I'll bring this up on the map just to show folks. And then we'll share on the Zoom. So, this red one up here is the Granite Ave Business District. This red one down here is East Milton. This one here is Milton Village and Central Ave. And that's all she wrote for commercial districts in town. That's the only commercially zoned land that we have. Now, there are obviously pre-existing non-conforming commercial businesses all over, but those are the only places that are zoned for commercial.
Two more questions, if they're brief, if we can make sure we're answering. Can you come up to, actually to the microphone and just state your name, please, thank you.
Welcome.
Chris Shirley, 55, Cortland Circle. On Granite, do we have a realistic number of units based on flood zone, Rivers Act, et cetera? I'm sorry if I missed that.
I mean, no, we don't, but...
Models or anything?
No.
And then you had mentioned that the post office was removed because it's a public land. What about on Granite that stayed on property?
So, the guidelines say that you can't get credit for unit capacity on publicly-owned land unless there's a recent history of potential disposition, or if the property is named as a strategic housing site in an approved housing production plan. in an approved housing production plan. So we have an approved housing production plan from 2020 that identifies Granite Ave as a potential housing site. So that's something that the state will look at and say, basically, as a housing agency, we approve this plan. You propose this as a potential housing site, so you can rezone it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mark.
Mark Cristow, again, Seventeen Waldorf. If I could just go back to the FAR question, Tim. Why would UTIL have recommended increasing the .5 FAR? It was in the Blue Hill Parkway-Elliott corridor districts by 40% to .7? Because if anything, it might actually, what your dimensional parameters exclude some properties, but apparently it doesn't. So why is that then, and they're also...
So at this late stage in the development of our dimensional parameters, we wanted to hold our unit capacity constant because for all of the other reasons why we had arrived at dimensional parameters and district borders, that sort of got us to the numbers we needed to. So .5 FAR would actually reduce our unit capacity below a level that would be compliant. So in order to kind of maintain all of the unit capacity numbers that we were getting out of those districts, we had to set the FAR at .7 for Elliott Street.
So you would lose number of units below the threshold of the average of 15?
Yes.
Interesting, I would have thought it would be just the reverse. And then how did those FAR, how did those unit volumes, the square foot is the unit, compare to the Granite and the Milton and the Mattapan stations? Because I'm assuming with an acre at 43,000 X, you've got FARs of 1 and 1.1 divided by 40 units, which is the maximum capacity. You're talking units somewhere about 1066, 1080. There seems to be a big disparity probably in terms of unit sizes based upon the locations. Is there a reason for that?
I'm not sure if I follow.
If on Norway Road, Norway Road was the one that I picked up last week because every house would be affected, because everything's over 7,500. So if the average house lot on Norway is, say, 12,000 square foot, at a .7, you're talking about structures that are going to be somewhere around the 8,500 square foot. So you're going to yield units at a little less than 3,000. But if you're looking at units that are by size at the other larger development sites in the 11, 1050 to 1100 square foot range, there's a big disparity. So what's the rationale behind that?
I think, Tim, that maybe it's a little bit of a question about unit size. And I think unit size...
It's average, too, I guess, right?
It's really average, and we don't know. It's up to the development community to propose the unit size. I think that's what it's getting at, Tim, so far.
Yeah, and I mean, the unit capacity number that the model spits out assumes a 1,000-square-foot unit, right? So in real life, if there are smaller units, there may be more. If there are larger units, there may be less. But there's also, each of those sub-districts, in addition to the FAR limit, has a max units per acre limit also. So, you know, if you do want to have smaller units, you can do that. But if you're now starting to bump up against that 40 or 45 units per acre, you know, because you're increasing the number of units, you're going to start to bump into that constraint. So, you know, the FAR constraint that we put in did not move our numbers one way or the other. It was put in to add the sort of the dimensional constraint to actually shape the building as opposed to affect the unit count.
So you think we'll get enough smaller units to be attractive to those that are downsizing? Either because they lose a spouse, or they're aged, and they need some smaller units that will be able to meet the need of demand that we want to see in terms of diversity of...
I think there's a demand for every type of housing unit in the town of Milton and in the greater Boston region. So I think a lot of the units that we see produced in the region are on the smaller side. I think a lot of the units that we see here in Milton may be larger than the city of Boston. But I think between Elliott Street, Blue Hills Parkway, all of the other ones, we have so many different types of building styles that you can produce under this zoning that I think we'll get a good mix if development actually happens.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Great. So at this time, I believe that concludes...
Should we close the public hearing?
Public hearing, yes. That's what I was going to ask for, a motion.
I'd like to move to close the public hearing for the MBTA Communities Overlay District.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Great. Thank you all so much for coming tonight. Thank you. And...
So you don't have to talk about your report now?
Yeah, that's what, I don't plan to talk about that.
The report can be oral at town meeting. It could be written. You do whatever you need to do.
Okay, we'll talk about that. So we did have one last item that, Maggie, you would ask to have this on, just a further discussion of outside legal counsel on the MBTA communities.
Yes.
Open that conversation.
Yes, I've brought it up before. And I still stand by my request. I have found it quite difficult getting information from a town council. I've been very disappointed in the past couple of days. Since I first reached out to him in August, he was very receptive. Before I reached out to him, I contacted Town Administrator Nick Milano to see if it was appropriate. He said it was. I then called him and, well, no, then he called me and apologized for the delay in getting back to me because he had to confirm with Nick Milano that it was appropriate for him to reach out to individual board members. And he got permission. And he said, yes, the town of Milton does allow individual board members to contact him directly. So we had very nice conversations in August. And since then, the conversations have stalled. I've emailed him a couple of times, and he has now said that I need to go through the board. And disappointed, I emailed him again, and I asked for the change of policy because it's my knowledge and my understanding that in past, that in talking to past planning board members, that planning board members could always reach out to town council. So I feel like a barrier has been put up with town council being able, or willing, to talk to planning board members. And I'm just disappointed in that. So I still strongly feel that the planning board needs its own representation. Additionally, if the planning board is going to write our own zoning article, we will need somebody to write it for us.
Okay. So Maggie, the question, I just want to clarify because I'm happy to represent, you know, the planning board on any, you know, any questions. There was actually another question that was sent to me, and I just want to go through your, make sure I'm clear on your question. Your question was on the repercussions of... And this, can I just read this from you? Is this okay? Because this is what we're, we just, Maggie has asked if we could get this information. If the planning board approves any article to create zoning in response to MGL 40A, Section 3A, for submission to special town meeting on December 4th, and the court or the U.S. Justice Department determines the law to be illegal or invalid, then what repercussion does it have for yourself or the planning board members? If town meeting approves any article to create zoning in response to MGL 40A, Section 3A, for submission to special town meeting on December 4th, 2023, and the court or the U.S. Justice Department determines the law to be illegal or invalid, then what repercussion does it have for the town of Milton and any other property owner or developer who proceeds with a bylaw, the right bylaw, by right bylaw, be faced with? So those were your questions.
Correct, yep.
Which I'm happy to follow up.
Those are questions you wanted to address to town council?
I did address to town council.
Yeah. I think it's in response to what is happening with Rockport, the lawsuit by residents, citizens of Rockport, filing a lawsuit against the town.
Oh, so they, did they file against planning, individual planning board members?
Yeah, and just in my experience, and that's why I had a very nice conversation with town council back in August. I just wanted to, I knew nothing of him. You know, I've had a long history dealing with the town of Milton and the legal department. And I just wanted to make sure that he was aware of my history, and I wanted to make sure that I wasn't putting the town of Milton, myself, or my business, in jeopardy. And I have filed appeals against the town of Milton. Town of Milton has filed appeals against me. So I just wanted to have a conversation with him and be open and honest with that. And we had a very nice conversation in August. And so then, through the course of the next couple of months, he has not been responsive. And so I'm just disappointed in that. And again, it just leads me to believe that barriers have been put in the way of the planning board in this matter, and I'm just really frustrated. And when I filed an appeal against the town of Milton, I did name individual planning board members. So I'm just, you know, I just don't want to complicate matters, and I just wanted an answer to that question.
So I know in my time on the board, there have been times when I've been named as a member of the planning board in some kind of legal action, and town council represents us as a planning board. And we're not named individually in terms of persons. We're named as members of an official body, and town council represents the body. So, I mean, I think in terms of a clarification in general on a decision made by the board, I'm comfortable having them explain to us how that works. But specifically to this law, it's town meeting that makes the decision about the zoning. And so I don't think that there's a, it's the same thing as a decision made by the planning board.
And since it's not our article, but I think that's worth asking. So, because it's...
And also, you know, someone else had brought up, like, if it's an ADA issue, then it's, like, it's a different, it's a different, we could be held responsible. And we, all I want is in writing from town council. That's all that I want. And he has not responded. So mostly, I'm just frustrated with his lack of response.
Okay, thank you. And then there was one other question that I received that was asked to be discussed, and these could all be just folded into some, just some questions for town council. This resident said, "I have a question that I would like to be discussed. In the AG's advisory opinion, there is a reference as to potential civil litigation of noncompliance, citing violation of federal and state fair housing laws." This person did a quick look at the laws and did not see this, did not see a connection, the connection between noncompliance resulting in legal action based on fair housing. The threat of legal action could be an overreach intended to force communities into compliance. This might be a question as to liability for Tim or for legal counsel. So that might be, you know, the question of if for some reason this did not go through, whether it's, you know, the town meeting didn't vote for it, what is, you know, the potential civil litigation referencing fair housing laws? And how would we be in violation?
So that's where I'd like to see our own lawyer, if we can find one.
Well, I think town council could answer that. I think actually, I think we...
I don't know if they're going to be as objective as I would like them to be, to be honest with you.
They would be defending us, so...
That's a town action at town meeting, and it would be an action against the town, not against the planning board. So I don't see where we have standing to hire counsel for that.
Yeah.
We don't have the authority to hire counsel to the...
I would be asking those, yeah.
I think it's just more to gather information is where I'm going, but...
Right.
And so the other thing, which I had requested when he was here, I had asked him to provide us with the documentation that says that the select board has the sole authority to hire legal counsel. And he has yet to provide that. So I asked him when he was here. I followed up with him. And then he said that I had to go through the planning board to make that request, which I thought we were not the planning board when I made the request.
So...
So can I, I'd like to see, Meredith, maybe you could put in writing everything that's being requested to be asked before I say yes? You know, these are kind of, and I'm not saying it word for word. I'd like to be able to understand it before I make a decision on that.
And so we all have different levels of comfort. We all have different questions. And that is why I was under the impression that planning board members as elected officials had access to town council individually. And now it seems like we don't. And I had asked for a, you know, to let me know when that policy changed. And I have, and I think I sent that yesterday.
So we can put those in writing and...
Put all the requests in writing, I think?
We can have those requests, you know, drafted, those questions.
I have put it in writing every single time, too.
Yes.
So just...
If I'm being asked to support a request, I'd like to be able to read the, what's going out beforehand. I think it's there.
Yes, all right, thank you.
So would that be something to be brought up at our next meeting?
Yeah, we can put that...
On the agenda and talk about it at the next meeting and come up with a decision?
For the ninth, yeah, we should be able to get that.
All right.
The ninth, we'll look at everything we have. We have a couple of public hearings on that. So, but I'd like to have time to just have that circulated, and we can do that. Okay. So this was, I think, a very good evening. A lot of, you know, good comments from the residents. But I think this is, unless there's anything else from the board, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Just a quick question.
Yeah.
When will we discuss our recommendation? I know the warrant committee is meeting soon, and then we obviously have town meeting on the 4th. So we have how many meetings between now and town meeting?
So we have been asked to come, to attend the, and I've reached everyone, Jim, the warrant committee on Monday, just if there's questions that we're not deliberating, but if anyone, if there's questions that arise that could, that would help inform the decision of the warrant committee as best we can. We've been asked to attend at 7:00 PM.
Cool, I'll be there.
So...
So we have the meeting on the 9th and the meeting on the 16th, and then...
So it'll be one of those.
So it'll be one of those, right? Do, okay. So I guess I don't know what's on the agenda, but I'm just wondering if we try for the 9th, if we have room, just so it's not the last meeting before.
Yeah.
How many days do we have? 21 days?
That's fair. I can try, we can put that on.
See if we can do it then, otherwise that's...
You're not going to be here, that's the only, that was...
So 21 days, that would be the 16th, right?
That we would need to respond, so...
Where does the warrant meet, here?
Yes.
Well, Tim said the report could just be done verbally at town meeting.
Yeah.
Let's check that, and then we can just try to put it on and at least start the discussion, so...
That 21-day clock very rarely kind of comes up or is invoked, but...
Okay. As long as there's something ready for town meeting. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At all, thank you.